Second.
Thank you.
I have a hand where do you want to go?
Um, the short.
I can barely hear you.
Favor the motion to approve the minute.
March nineteenth. Nineteenth minutes, then, Councilor Diddy.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, I can barely hear any of you.
So I have Councilor Diddy, Councilor Harman, President Galpin, Councilor Tito. Who was that? This one probably top five minutes. And although opposed. Although Diddy.
Diddy, yeah. That wasn't there.
Five, zero with two extensions.
Um, next, oh, there we go. Next is approving regular session minutes for April sixteenth. Um, I think with that one, there was one edit, um, Ronnie wanted to make, um, for providing funds for Tuolotin High School and Mount Tigard High School. Um, but that was the only thing that I saw for the. Probably I forgot. Yeah, it was for twelve, I mean. All right, would somebody like to make a motion to approve of that edit? Moved. Your second? Thank you.
Councilor Tito, move each in in two seconds. Your performance.
No, uh, Council President.
Council President.
Yeah, thank you. Um. Your job, Mr. President.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Five, uh, five, Diddy. All those opposed? All those Diddy? Commissioner.
Oh, I was still reading it, I'm sorry. I was just looking at one thing, um, that I wasn't sure about.
I guess I'm too late to disturb.
So I'll abstain.
Motion carries, five, zero with two extensions.
Um, next on our list, uh, voting to approve budget committee meeting for May fifth, twenty twenty-five. Um, Ronnie, I believe in that one, um, my name is just spelled incorrectly, and a roll call in elect chair. And I said him an N. Any other edits or discussion around budget meeting? Would you like to make a motion to approve?
Move, second.
Moved by Council President, seconded by Councilor Hartman.
All those in favor? For Targidi? All those opposed? All those abstaining? Do you want to just check with Councilor R Diddy one more time? If he's.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
Can you hear us?
You, good, barely.
Um, for budget committee meeting minutes, were you a yes, or a no, or an abstention?
Yes.
Thank you, and then, Captain Braverman, can you provide reason for your abstention?
Uh, I haven't been able to list them, and if I don't see them here attached, uh, I will find missing something, but also I missed most of the meeting, so I think it's better to abstain, I have no idea if they're correct or not.
For missing most of the meeting. Okay, cool, thank you. Okay, and then, um, next item on our list, number five, approve financials, um, April twenty twenty-five financial report. Are there any questions on our financial report for April? Limited questions tonight, all right, somebody want to move to approve?
They'll move to that one.
Hey, we had, we had two, let's go ahead and give it to Councilor Hartman over here, do you want a second? Sure. Let's Councilor Tito a second.
I've had a motion and a second to approve the April two thousand and twenty-five financial report. So, and I, my notes in favor.
Yes.
Five. All those opposed? All those abstaining?
Council Braverman, can you state your reason?
I missed most of the meeting, uh, was scheduled in the morning when I was at work.
Sorry, this is just for the, um, April financials, there was a meeting for it, just the financials for April.
Well, I'm just abstaining because I, I just don't know if they're accurate.
Okay, next item on our list, special presentations, we have Fourth of July activities, um, planned for tonight, it's Teagan. Hi, welcome, thanks for being here.
Evening, Councilors, my name's Teagan Emlow, and I am working with a committee to plan the Fourth of July events this year, we're really excited about it. Um, we're working on putting together a parade that's going to go from the association down to the park, uh, as well as a community at the park afterward. It's really great, and there are a couple of things that I was hoping I could get some help and kind of spark from you all. Uh, so, the first thing, um, that I wanted to ask about is, my understanding of the parade rules and the organization or whatnot, but for the city is that we're not allowed to put any sort of advertising signs in the public right of way. Um, we wanted to see if it was possible to get some sort of variance, or whatever the appropriate manner would be to be able to put, uh, like a little sign in the right of way on Fisher Road and One Thirty-First that just says when the event is, and encourages people to check out the website to have more information so they can participate this day.
Weston or Max, do you guys know how to answer that question?
In the past, we've offered, uh, separate grants to particular events, and it's a city sponsored event, but typically outside of the right of way. Council, so it's tiresome.
What would be the process for getting it approved?
It would be a temporary sign.
Is that something that she would complete, that we would complete on her? Yeah.
I could put together the application for it.
Great.
Um, the next item I wanted to ask you all about is a budget item, so in the past, the city has provided funding for additional, uh, restroom porta potty facilities and hand washing stations for the people who participate in the event. Uh, I think last year we had, I have like two thousand people come through, um, and with the one porta potty, it's not considered adequate facilities for the amount of crowd that we bring into the community for that day. Um, in the past, the city has paid for the additional porta potties and a hand washing station so that people who are at the event can use those facilities, so I wanted to see if that was something we could get support for again.
Where do we put them usually, do you?
Cool, that is a good question, so for last year's event, um, the city and Mike coordinated it, so they were there. That's all I paid attention to because I was coordinating the other things that were happening, so toilets showed up, um, and hand wash.
Saying that the two that are down there already, that's not enough for?
I was told last year that it was not sufficient for the amount of people that would come through the event, um, and I.
Not so many toilets for bottoms.
Yeah, so.
How many people, how many people can you list here?
We didn't have like somebody counting, but, I mean, I think it was over a thousand, something, a thousand and two thousand, we had a lot of people through.
That would be like a lot of porta potties.
It would be a lot of porta, I don't know if we'd have to do the one per twenty, because we'd, we'd fill the whole, the entire park, toilets. And as much fun as they are for the, yeah, for people coming to the event, um, they'd probably rather have face painting or something, but, um, whatever the, the city would say would be required for the permit for the event, um, we would just have that.
Wasn't there like four, six brought down last year on a trailer day up?
Yeah, so it was thrown together within like the last week or two, so it was a rush job, but we did the best that we could, given the time that we had on it, and we put, I think it was like four, five that we put down there, then we put like a hand washing, uh, hand washing station as well. So, this year we're ahead of the ballgame, we've been working as part of this committee, and our plan is to hopefully have a tent to provide shade for people, uh, water, porta potty, and then, uh, hopefully some element of entertainment, uh, of our work. So, that's true, I think we were also, the committee hasn't met in a couple months, but our, our hope was to get some sort of music down there, um, and other vendors and things of that nature that are kind of outside of our.
We, we had the committee met, um, I think last week, um, and so we've meeting regularly, we're going to have another meeting after this, um, presentation, you know, we'll have some more information. Uh, we are working on having vendors present, we had a bunch last year, it was really successful for them, a lot of the vendors sold out of their product, and so, they've already been reaching back out, asking if they can come again. Um, we had face painting, we're working on potentially trying to get live music there, um, and we're working on trying to see if we can get some sponsorship from local businesses to help support some of the activities that are provided for the kids and the families and people who come through, so, I think it's going to be really great.
Okay, so questions?
Yes.
Are you seeking our help with just providing additional porta potties and hand washing stations right now? Okay. There was a lot of activities, I was just confirming what we're.
Do you need extra funding for other things?
I mean, if you have more money, we'll take it, like, we could always do more fun things, but nobody wants to sponsor the toilets, so. It's not the most exciting part.
Jessica's name on one of them.
Yeah.
When somebody uses a porta potty, they'll be thanking me that it's theirs.
They will.
I don't mind if my name is there. Uh, I don't know how many people have had to use the restroom and there isn't one, it's not a lot of fun, so I, I would.
Here when you need me, kind of thing, yeah.
I was wondering like what your route is, because I would think you would want to put a porta potty, you know, every so young she.
We haven't put porta potties on the parade route in the past, um, I actually have a graphic that I put together that I can provide to you guys later, I can email a copy to you, Mayor. But it's, it's essentially a route that has been used in previous years, um, so it's going to go from the association and then it goes down through like Queen Elizabeth, and then. Oh, royalty, yeah, and then it gets on Fisher, and then goes through Edgewater to the park, and then it's going to route back as well, but, once we get to the park, um, the walkers and the bikers won't be proceeding, and it'll just be like the classic cars and the golf carts.
On the way back.
Yes, on the way back.
I participated last year, and by the time I got to the park, the park events were breaking up, so my question regarding the porta potties, it's kind of been in my background, um, they recommend fifty to seventy-five, uh, people to porta potty. Did you feel like there were enough porta potties and wash stations last year?
I did not personally partake in them.
Yes.
Um, but I think, I didn't have any concerns from anyone that was.
Okay, so it sounds like we ended up with like a half a.
Four or six, they were actually lined up, I think, just at the park, because you did a really good job last year, because food vendors out and all the trucks pulled up, and I remember the two trucks were there, and I think there was two sets of three in that parking lot, and I don't remember there being lines at the back, there were plenty of lines.
Yeah.
Eight down there, so that's pretty close.
So that's pretty close to your, so.
Maybe just, maybe just adding one or two more for good measure, and assuming because there's more organization, there may be more people.
Should you think we should provide feet? Is that overkill now, because we already have two down there, do we want like, I think there's a balance of like, what do you think as our, as the.
Um, I think that, I mean, I think the amount we had last year seemed fine, there were a lot of people who lived in the local community that just would go use their own toilets if they needed to.
I recommend you guys do the research and tell us how many we should have.
Yeah, last year the city told us how many they wanted based on, so we just did what was required.
We just follow route, hopefully the doctor. We need to.
Whatever.
It's all in the spirit of the section, it's a big part of that, by fire.
Perfect, okay, and then was there, I know in our conversation there was other things that you wanted, and I don't feel that.
One more, yes, I have one more, um, so for the parade route, we usually request police escort to help sort of like go through all the different roadways, we have to temporarily close down part of, um, Fisher, no, yes, Fisher, until we get into the Edgewater community. Um, and so, I don't know what the process is for securing a police escort, I could obviously put it on the permit application as well, but I thought I would just mention it to see if that's something that council would support.
Is that something she could add to her application? Perfect, okay, now that we got you taken care of.
Yeah, I hope you guys can all come, um, and we'll be advertising and posting it in all the different Facebook groups, and hopefully getting those signs up in the, on the roadway, so.
And they'll have each that a QR code or something to the website?
Yep, so, I'm going to put together a QR code so that the signs will basically say like, this is the event and the date, and for more information, go here, and then people can see the parade route, and there's, um, information on if you wanted to put a classic car through, or decorate a golf cart, or be a vendor, or just come and participate.
Great.
Yeah, thank you so much, you guys.
All of your efforts for putting this together.
Yeah, we're looking forward to it.
Elaine, do you have more to add to?
Okay, next, um, we have open forum. Open forum is intended to ensure the community has an opportunity to provide input for items being considered on the agenda, or make suggestions for future agendas. At this time, the council will be happy to receive your comments pertaining to items on the agenda, with the exception of public hearings, so this is not supposed to be a moment for, um, for comments on our, on our hearing, so just open forum for items on the agenda, um, for which testimony will be received and conducted in proper form and manner, we'll read that later. Um, last week, we opened up, um, our time limit to be, to be between three and four minutes, um, I like not having to cut you guys off and hear what you say, so I want to, you know, proceed with that as well, if you don't need the whole four minutes, by all means, don't use it, but we. You want to do it. So, um, let's see. Open forum, okay, so our first speaker here, we have Gretchen, welcome, thank you.
Evening, Gretchen Beener, one six five eight five Southwest Royalty Parkway, resident since two thousand and fifteen. Um, I'm here wearing both my personal hat and my hat as the Chair of the Planning Commission, and I am unable to stay for the public hearing tonight due to a prior engagement, um, but I did want to report what happened at the Planning Commission when we, uh, heard this hearing for the development along One Thirty-Seventh. Um, we had some concerns as planning commissioners, particularly about the traffic issues on, uh, the intersection of One Thirty-Seventh and Beef Bend, uh, because of the fact on the other side of the street, there are two roads, Peachtree, Collier, and One Thirty-Seventh in the middle, they put a pedestrian safety zone, which has actually made the road more dangerous, and, uh, we were all concerned about head-on collisions, people trying to make left turns. So, um, even though we had those concerns, the applications for both the annexation and the, uh, land use application met all the criteria ordained by state law. The ability to make decisions on land use decisions has been extremely limited by recent changes in state law, and so I wanted to make sure that the council was aware it was a unanimous vote to approve recommending, recommending the annexation and the, um, land use application, because that's what the state law says that we have to do now. Um, on a personal note, um, I have been on the council, and I was on the Planning Commission way back when I first moved here, um, I've had a working relationship with Mr. Weston for ten years now, he has always been very helpful, he has helped facilitate, before we had Max, getting things through the Planning Commission and through the council, and I think it's really important that you folks hear how it works on the inside, that it works very well, I really appreciate all that he has done. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Melanie Sage Bear. All right, I just started.
Hi, Melanie Sage Bear, one two three six nine Southwest King George, been a resident since two thousand and thirteen, Aho, Metacui, Austin, Hia, Masi. Greetings to all my relations, thank you very much for allowing me to speak. Most of you who know me know I'm a strong, independent woman, I have my own voice, my own views and opinions with a loud voice. I am now going to clear up some issues that were spoken to at the last council meeting. I will start by saying I have spoken here at council meetings before, once on the importance of the natural habitat of the Banksden property, down to the Tuolotin River that once was a part of the Kalapui Indian tribe, which is part of my Confederate tribes of Grand Ron. My feelings have not changed and will always try to preserve this and other lands from being destroyed. The last time I spoke, I had applied for a seat on the Planning Committee, during that interview, I told the council, I was then acting as the administrator of KCCA across the street, I had disgruntled employees who were trying to falsify records among other issues. I was the board secretary, the board meeting monitor by quoting Robert's Rules of Orders for Conduct, I was also the Landscape Architectural Review Committee Head. It was this position that I worked with Mike Weston, Ronnie Smith, and the King City Police Department. There were many times I needed Mike's help with wrongful tree removal, property lines, fence building, and illegal parking, Mike was always helpful and made time to assist me. There were contentious meetings often at KCCA, and when I would ask Mike to have an officer check in on the meeting, it was always done, very much appreciated. During the interview, Mike was asked about my application and me, by member Tiso, he replied at that time, he was aware of the, he was aware of the recall and the issues, but was not privy to any further information, I believe.
Is this related to an item on the agenda?
Isn't Banksden property and, okay, maybe it's not.
Absolutely, it's the Banksden property, yes.
Okay, so.
Is this related to that?
It is, I just spoke of Banksden property, okay, I'd like to finish, um.
She turned off the microphone.
It is, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Vince, okay, I do not believe he has spoken negatively about me or past rumors, I know what it's like to be on a board, where you're following the law, the proper meeting conduct, and all the governing documents, it is not a favorable position. People talk, conversations get blown out of proportion, and rumors start, again, I state, so that there is no misunderstanding, Mr. Weston works very hard for King City, he has knowledge, knowledge that most of us don't even understand, the rights of landowners and intimate domain, the development of our city, it is a given, we're growing. In closing, I'd like to ask that fingers stop being pointed and let us all find a way, or several ways, to work together, this is a wonderful city that is growing, I will and now always will be here to help my neighbors and our government make King City better, thank you, Bubba Grumps, Mama, granted by the permission of Oregon Fish and Wildlife Permit Number zero zero two six eight, which is now on record with City Hall, with King City, thank you.
Okay, next we have, uh, Jody Sanders.
The best thing about this is I'll be fast.
Should I start the timer?
Yeah, you set it for twelve seconds, but. I wanted to congratulate all of you and thank you, it's so wonderful to have this group, uh, representing us, you're properly seated, you're all here, it's great, you have smiles on your faces, and, uh, it's been a long time in coming, I'm not an expert on it or anything, but I've followed it somewhat over the last three years, and it's been a rough row to hold, but here you are, so, congratulations, and I hope, this is my, my point, it's, it's an olive branch, let's, all of us try to get over ourselves and work together, not just pretend like saying it's transparent. Transparent is for glass, and water and stain on the board, it doesn't really have anything to do with integrity and personal responsibility, but we can do better than we've done, not, you guys weren't all here, but you're the new regime, and I think it's great, and I wish you the Godspeed, and I would like to say, I'm echoing the last two ladies that talked, Mike Weston, I haven't known him very long, we talked about his, his and my son's parallel military careers, my son was a Green Beret and he's a SEAL, and they've, it's kind of neat to compare their training and what, where they've been, and very interesting to me, anyway, and I found him to be, uh, extremely knowledgeable, and I haven't ever heard specifically, uh, that he isn't knowledgeable or helpful, and so I, my hope is that he can continue doing what he's doing with all of you, and we'll get somewhere, there's so many things, and here, I've almost done, there's so much facing King City, decisions to make, proposals, I was reading about it, trying to get halfway smart before tonight, and I found, my amazement that there's a rail system, um, more than just talked about to go from Portland to Bridgeport, that would have a little bit of an impact on ninety-nine and five, and I didn't even know about it, there's so many things that we're facing, if we divide and we're involved with legal maneuvering and lawsuits and crap, we can't possibly focus on this myriad of decision-making and putting forth our best efforts to get what we want as King City done, there's, there's a lot of stuff, and there's a lot of wealthy people, a lot of money has changed hands, both over and under the table in the last twenty years, and we've got to be united and on our toes, I didn't mention any names yet, it's true. Well, it's true.
All right.
I'm through, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Try to, um, get along, play nice, you're all bigger than the petty crap that has preceded you, I'm convinced.
Uh, next we have Carl Fonsen.
Evening, Carl Fonsen, one two zero eight five, Southwest King Richard Drive, I wanted to address the TSP, the Charlin Development, the Kensington Square Development. Uh, the citizens recalled the mayors and the councilors that voted for the TSP with the extension of Fisher Road, the city still struggles to follow citizen direction, part of the problem is we have three councilors that were appointed by the councilors that the citizens recalled, they still follow the direction of the unelected manager of King City. Today's agenda includes the Charlin and Kensington Square Development. Today's agenda includes the Charlin and the Kensington Square Development, both of these were impacted by the current TSP, the Charlin developer wanted to move the road north, but the city manager wanted to use the TSP to limit those kinds of changes. The Kensington Square developer will triple the number of homes on the dead end of Hundred Thirty-Seventh, the intersection of Hundred Thirty-Seventh and Beef Bend is a well-known safety problem, most notably by the suicide left turn lanes that are too short. We must revise the TSP, but I doubt the citizens will be able to get what they want so long as the unelected manager of King City is still controlling the processes. Also, Clean Water Services has not yet released the South Bowl Mountain Stormwater Study, by approving developments before the stormwater plan is in place, with the current erosion along Hundred Thirty-Seventh and in King City Park, we risk solving existing problems as a comprehensive plan by approving developments like Kensington Square. I tried to raise the safety issues on Hundred Thirty-Seventh and Beef Bend by explaining how the history of the TSP impacted developments, but the Chair of the Planning Commission shut me down and would not let me speak on how the TSP history impacts the safety of that intersection and other issues, as these developments come up for review, we need to be allowed to speak, and we need to revise the TSP, that's it.
Okay, and last for tonight is Greg Russell. Okay, and last for tonight is Greg Russell.
So, Greg Russell, Washington County Incorporated. I had an opportunity to speak with the LUT Land Use Development of Washington County at the Beaverton Farmers Market and also the Tigers Farmers Market. And I had received a phone call from the LUT just a couple of hours ago about my concerns about Collier, Beef Bend Road, and 137th and Peachtree. And they all have acknowledged that that is a particular problem. My concern is that decisions haven't been made on this thing quick enough. Washington County is open to giving a presentation to city council, maybe at the next city council meeting, to kind of give us an update on what may be happening with that particular intersection. And I think that's something that we should be working on sooner than later. And we know there are probably people walking around right now that will be involved in an accident over there on Beef Bend Road, on 137th. Maybe it's a child going to Deer Creek Elementary School or someone going over to Safeway. And I would like very much to be able to get started on this thing and working on it as quickly as possible. The second thing that I wanted to bring up, as I had mentioned a couple of times about King City having an Oregon Branch Post Office. And I've given all the information to Mike Weston and the contacts. And I wanted to find out what kind of progress or steps we've been making in that direction. And this is something that I'm sure that 99% of Edgewater and King City would go ahead and support. And I would like to see what kind of momentum we have going on this now. Thank you.
Thank you. That was an item that was supposed to be on the last couple of agendas, but with the heftiness of these agendas, the plan is to have it on next month.
Next month.
We do hear you, and we are working on it. Good. Thank you. Okay, that, was there anybody online? Okay. Right. So that closes our open forum portion of our meeting. Next up, we will move to unfinished business. First item there is our development agreement on Charlin.
Ezra Hammer to be here since he's the attorney that's been working on the Charlin Development Agreement to give his memo and presentation on this since there was a question at last meeting.
I don't know that it's on, but I can hear you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council President, Councilors. My name is Ezra Hammer. The land use attorney with the law firm of Jordan Ramis. We provide limited contract services for the city, specifically in the realm of land use. And we do support the city in negotiating the Charlin Woods Development Agreement before you for consideration tonight. So, I believe, Mayor, there was a desire for an overview of development agreements generally, and then we did that in particulars with this one. So, development agreements are tools that cities can utilize in the context of developments to secure and negotiate items that otherwise can't be attached to the land use approvals. As somebody mentioned earlier, state land use law places very strict guidelines around what cities can and cannot acquire of projects when they're brought forward. And development agreements provide cities with opportunities to negotiate at arm's length with a developer as part of a project to secure those items that otherwise can't be accommodated in a project itself. They come in two varieties. The first are statutory. There is a statutory option under Chapter 94, which lays out a process for development agreements. And then there are non-statutory development agreements, which a city can enter into using their general police powers and contracting authorities. The latter are favored by cities because they're more nimble, a little bit more flexible, and they provide you with greater opportunities to negotiate this free item. As part of this project, the city and project applicant decided to enter into negotiations on a development agreement around several key items. And those items are included in the development agreement, which is before you today. And unless there's any questions about development agreements generally, I'll go into those items. So-
Do you have a second motion? There is one in there. Do you guys have the side sign in your pockets for the end?
At least.
Yeah.
No.
It's not in the room.
Yeah, it's in the-
It's in the agenda, it's not in-
It's not in the packet?
He didn't print that agenda for me. I didn't see it.
Jessica, I think it might be on the page you got something else.
No, I don't, and nobody, I didn't-
It wasn't printed.
I only have this. Is this helpful or not helpful?
Not helpful.
Okay.
On page, is it 17, Eastern?
Page 15.
It looks like it's this.
It looks like this. I don't have that. Sorry, that's my fault for not- Thank you.
Do you have a chair?
I have a chair.
Yeah, here's Charlin.
Thank you for your flexibility and for your sharing. So, as I mentioned, the first was the city's request for improvements to complete 155th. If you are looking at the maps in front of you, you'll notice that there's those segments that is called out as 155th. That is on the far northeastern portion of the project. Approximately 10,000 square feet of those improvements are actually located on the adjacent property, which the project applicant is in contract to purchase, but has not purchased yet. So, the party isn't negotiating. So, the city wished for those improvements to be completed. They include streets, curbs, gutters, sidewalks, tree wells, trees, right-of-way improvements. So, the applicant agreed to complete those improvements so long as the city was willing to support it in its ability to secure that approximately 10,000 square feet. Absent that, they would be unable to complete that section of the road. It's being brought up on the big screen right now. Can zoom in at the northeast corner there?
Yes, yes.
So, kind of where my, my, my big hair is pointing, this is the area in question. So, this, a portion of a certain segment of that road again is located on this property here and could not be completed absent the applicant being able to secure that. The second piece of the development agreement that's material clarifies a component of state law that explains when a project applicant can start vertical construction. So, we kind of think about development in two parts. We have the horizontal, parts of work, the roads, the utilities, et cetera. And then the vertical, it allows vertical constructions to begin from where a plat is recorded so long as certain key features are in place and the remainder is bonded forth. And what this development agreement did was kind of clarify exactly when that occurs, in accordance with past practices. But still, in that hand, it gives you the law. Third component was to secure the donation improvement of approximately nine-acre open space segment. It's referred to here as Track A. I believe we made kind of exhibit that the applicant provided that shows the segment in greater detail. And I mentioned this is about a nine-acre segment. And part of the development agreement, the applicant required to build out a walking path from the northern segment heading south, as well as a viewing area. And then, spacing, spacing the false ground for the purpose of public use and access. And as part of the development agreement, the applicant includes improvement and then feed them over to the city for its use, by purposes. So, that segment is part of the city's open space network. Importantly, the city, the Kingston Terrace Master Plan calls for increased river access, as well as kind of a north-south trail along the river itself. And so, this parcel was important to help that future improvement when those resources become available. So, those three pieces were memorialized in the development agreement, and that is-
Maybe this is a part of the agreement. Is that the body of water that's shown in the plan?
This is the toilet?
I know the river, what's the blue?
Oh, the creek on water.
The lake.
Oh, no. It's a stormwater, stormwater. Part of the development.
And where is the Bangston Nature Preserve in relation to that, ma'am?
It's not.
Way, way down? I'm not sure.
Thank you so much. That was really helpful to kind of get a grasp of what this is. Are there any questions?
If I'm not to look at any, if I want to look at this. This is the-
City of King City staff report.
It's not there.
Okay, that's on this one? This is the Charlin Woodland?
Yes, ma'am. The memo that comes to the floor.
Okay. I wonder if it's getting-
When is this starting? When is the development starting? When is it slated to start?
Great question. You may want to ask our staff to answer.
I'm there, if you can stand if you want. Vince, did you hear?
I can hear anything. Can you hear what I just said?
Which actually lets it come up to the mic. That way you can hear as well. Thank you.
I don't know who made the presentation. I have no idea who that man was.
He introduced himself first. I'm sorry, could you reintroduce yourself, though?
Sure. Hi, Councilor, my name is Ezra Hammer. I'm a lawyer with the law firm of Jordan Ramis. We provide contract legal services for King City, specifically around areas of land use.
Get that?
Did I get that?
Did you hear him? Yes.
Is that the guy in the suit?
Yes.
Counsel is not the best way to do things. Because, for one thing, the audio is terrible. I don't have, you can't see me. So, I'm in a little bit of a vacuum here, but go ahead. I hear you.
Can we allow him to turn on his camera? Oh, okay. Yeah, well, then, never mind. Okay, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Pam Verdadero. I'm with the New Home Company. I handle the acquisitions and entitlements for the company. And Charlin Farm, which is the subject of the development agreement this evening, is a property that we are in contract to purchase. We plan to close on that property at approximately, probably 2028. So, development would start just thereafter if market prevails.
Thank you so much.
29, probably. Thank you.
The council said that there is one portion in the northeast section that's still under negotiations. What's the, where are you in the negotiations? And what happens if they fall through?
So, we're no longer in negotiations. We actually do have an option to purchase that property today. Great, thank you.
Okay, any further follow-up questions? Do you have a question? No? Okay. At this point, we can make a motion to approve?
Moved. Second.
Going to do a roll call vote for this plan. Mr. Wilson, can you conduct that, please?
That was Counselor Hardman that moved, and President Galvin second.
Correct. To approve Charlin Development Agreement.
I'll start with Counselor Ardeedy online. Counselor Gerhardt.
Yes.
Counselor Breivens.
I'm voting no.
Counselor Tysoe.
Yes.
Counselor Hardman.
Yes.
President Galvin. Mayor Kozmierzki. Question carries six, one.
All right. Next item for unfinished business is to discuss and consider Resolution Number R 2025-11. This is our resolution of the City of King City adopting a resolution committing to majority annexation and confirming position to avoid forced island annexation. We are not bringing this forward to debate a vote on it. We're bringing it forward just to discuss potentially amending that motion. And there were some Oregon statutes, some legal things we need to discuss, and we work it and work together to have an appropriate resolution that, you know, we're not breaking any laws. So, who's presenting?
I didn't see someone.
All right, thank you.
One of these words. This one? I worked a little too well.
That's the one, okay.
Mayor Kozmierzki, you discussed media around the issue of annexations, which I appreciate. And we were able to, I was able to get her some information that she thought would be helpful for the group. Many people that have lived in Oregon for a long time remember voter-approved annexations. It's worked a couple of different ways. There are cities that had charters that required the city electors to approve the annexation before the annexation could occur, as well as the electors in the area that was to be annexed. That was referred to as a double annexation. There was also a triple annexation, which required that a majority of the electors voted in the election, and that both city electors approve it and electors in the area approve it. On top of that, here in Metro, Metro had a boundary commission that at one point also had to approve it, though they gave up that authority to either approve or disprove them in the mid-2000s. What, turning in, well, a while ago, but the most famous case is in 1990. There was an area between Portland and Gresham that was failing. All of their subsidy systems were failing. They needed to be put on sewer, and they weren't part of the city. So, the legislature passed legislation basically forced Portland and Gresham to take these areas, the litigation's called the Mid-County. And it created a framework that there are health and safety reasons where annexation is going to be compelled, even if either the city or the people being annexed don't want to be. So, that was upheld by the Oregon Supreme Court. In the 2000s, there became the issue of people trying to annex in the cities and the city electors simply saying, "We don't want you." And so, that ended up coming to a head in 2016. It was Senate Bill 1573 that was passed. And it dramatically changed the laws around annexation and how those occur. It preempted all the cities with charters that required city elector approval. So, the city electors could no longer turn down the annexation approvals. They created automatic annexations based off certain factors. If the land is in the urban growth boundary, if it's adjacent to the city, if the 100%- If the land is in the urban growth boundary, if it's adjacent to the city, if the, if 100% of the owners are asking, then there's some caveats, but cities are pretty much required to take those in. If there's a line of properties in a row that are all contiguous, so if you imagine 10 lots in a row, if the first six want to come in to the city, the city's required to take them. If lot seven doesn't want to come in, but lot eight, nine, and 10 do, then the city has the option of taking in all 10, or they have the option of stopping the annexation when the one property owner who says, "I don't want to annex it." So it gives us a little bit of flexibility, but much, much less flexibility than the city traditionally had in Oregon. There are a variety of other things that they've changed, and it seems like every couple of years, our ability to say no is further eroded, except in instances where land is outside of the urban growth boundary. So if land's outside the urban growth boundary, then unless there's some accident emergency, public safety thing, which generally requires a goal exception to the, Oregon land use will, which I won't get into because that's very complex and you guys don't want to spend that much time talking about it. But except for the goal exception, then those city services cannot be provided to those properties. So when we talked about how to kind of do what you want, in my understanding, we had focused on island annexations because that's when a property is surrounded in the city. It's like, we get to annex you whether you like it or not. And a lot of people don't like inland cities do that. So that's what we had focused on. As I thought, like, how can I, how can I write something that kind of implements what you want? One of my first thoughts was that we suggest that we're only going to do annexations that are consistent with provisions of ORS 222.170, which is that, them asking us to annex them and when they reach a certain number, a certain percentage, we would say, yeah. And the reason that a city would always do that is because we have to pay for elections ourselves. And we don't know what the outcome of an election would be. So we do know what the outcome of somebody petitioning to come in would be when they reached that threshold of signatures. The problem with drafting the resolution in that manner is that there are other times where we might not want a property and they might not want to come in where we might be required to take them. So what, what I, you know, what I kind of, as the mayor and I were kind of sharing thoughts on this, we want something that's completely consistent with state law, but also meets what you as a council want to do. And I think that the cleanest way of doing that is to have it specifically prohibition on annexation, island annexation, single property island annexation, if you want to do that, and then a general comment related to the city's very strong preference for doing annexation via that ORS 222.170 process. So if I'm getting closer to what you want, then I can, we can bring, we can bring something back like that. Just know that there is instances where the legislature is going to say, "Sorry."
Do you want to say something? Yeah. No, I just want to bring out that on my phone, I just was looking at the law while you were talking, because some people will say, "Oh, Ms. Breivard is looking at her phone." So I'm looking at the law. So I'm going to show the whole room. I'm looking at the Senate bill and I'm looking at what you're talking about. And what I'm understanding and some research that I did before coming in today was that a city can require a vote on a proposed annexation. It's not always mandatory. State law allows for annexations without voter approval under certain circumstances, particularly when the territory is within an urban growth boundary, which the one that we're talking about was. However, some city charters mandate voter approval for all annexations regardless of state law. So there are exceptions.
I think that's, yeah, and I think we can... I heard, I think that that's pretty much what the explanation was there. I think that's much closer to what we were thinking. In my, you know, research and limited legal expertise, I did see the same thing, that we cannot pass a resolution to prohibit island annexations, but that it was allowed to either limit or condition and say, "This is our last resort." So is that something that we can just make it clear that we, you know?
Yeah, I mean, we can have a strong policy statement.
Yeah.
And I think people that, and if people really don't want to be part of the city, sometimes there are really good reasons not to include them in the city.
Right. So I think, yeah, draft it, draft it kind of along the lines of what you were saying, that we just want that to be our last resort. We would prefer, you know, willing, willing parties and then as long as it is, you know, adhering to all state statutes, I think that's something we could, yeah, move forward with. Any additional questions about that? Anything else you wanted to add?
So your example here of six properties saying yay and the seventh one no and the others saying yay, that's really kind of like eminent domain, maybe?
No, so there, I know with the neighborhood in Jason, the city of your heart, all the islands, they want it to be gated. The city doesn't allow gated. So when this law changed, one of the things that I looked at was what impactable that have. And if property, if the property in the islands is adjacent to the your heart city boundary, once they annex in, they can. So I was tasked with, by that city council saying, "Okay, what are the, what are the implications?" So it's the first break in the line of properties, that is the first opportunity that the city has to say, "No, we won't go any further." And that's it. It's just a straight line. So there were other, there were other properties in the islands that touch your heart in other ways, but, but the first street where people were interested in coming in, it's like, which ones, which ones of these do we have to take? And at what point can we say no? Say no. And then the option the city would have is if it's all the ones except the one, then you could, you could go to the end and take them all. If you don't want to take them, you have to take the first six, but then you don't have to go any further. Then the seventh, because it's not contiguous to the city boundary.
Okay. So what are our options then to avoid forced island annexations? What would you recommend?
Just if, if we were just, you would say no as a council. I mean, if the staff were to bring you and say, "We want to do an island annexation," and it's not for a health emergency, you would just say no.
Okay.
There's no reason we have to do an island annexation. Like, an island annexation is separate. What, what Mr. Watts is talking about is if somebody came to you, council members, and said, "I've got six properties. Property seven doesn't necessarily want to come, but I want to come into the city." You don't have to take it. You can just take your six. The other two, on the other hand, nine are like, "Please take us. Please take us." So there's no, there's no way to get exactly through a connected property other than this. Council then has a choice whether they want to take it.
If, is it possible to get some of your notes, Mr. Watts, on this to the council? So I'd like to take a look at it and help maybe give some ideas on how I think the council wants to draft this, since I think I made one of the motions. But the thing that I think the most important thing is that we don't want to, there's two things in my mind. Number one, we don't want to misread a group of people and tell them that we're actually putting in a ramp and a trail when we're really trying to annex them and have them come to council and complain, because it just embarrasses all of us.
I think what we need to do is make a motion to reconsider, because the motion that we had voted on include, said, "Say no, force the annexation." Right? So I think at this point, we need a motion to reconsider and amend that so that we can move forward properly with...
Motion to reconsider.
Yep. I'll second that.
All in favor? Okay. So would you like to...
President Galvin and councillor Ardi D.
Yes.
Seven, seven, to reconsider the motion.
So I would like to move to amend the original motion to say that we would like island annexation to be the last possible option, that we would pursue other forms of annexation first. Does that cover it?
I want to, I want to take a look at the notes and see how we can word it properly. So obviously, we want to follow order of law and we want to do, we want to follow our charter.
So I think the motion that amend hits on all that.
Yeah.
So that is my motion. For a second. Now we're voting on the amendment. The amendment, the amendment.
The city would prefer not to use island annexation if it was possible. Did I sum that up right?
Yeah. That island annexation would be the last resort, that we would pursue voluntary annexation first, and that we would be adhering to all Oregon state statutes in the process. That works.
Unless our charter is in conflict with... That's why, that's why I want to look at it.
Yeah. For now. Okay. And then we have... All in favor? Raise your hand.
My hands up.
Great. Thank you. Right. Amended motion passes. All right. Moving right along, the next item on the agenda is the TSP relook. A while ago, we had passed a resolution to just be checking in consistently on how we can make that happen. And so I would just like updates from the staff on where we are with that.
I'm happy to give you an update. Happy to give an update. Hopefully you all can hear me. It's been a very busy last few months, as you are all aware. We just did our audit. We're starting another audit. We've been doing subdivisions, left, right, and center. So my hope is, is that as things hopefully calm down and we get everybody on board, we just lost the mayor, we got a new mayor, we got a new councillor to fill that seat. It's been a slightly hectic round here, you can imagine. So my hope is, is that as things calm down, that we'll be able to refocus and be coming on that first.
Okay. There was also public comment last week about contacting, oh dear, the... I can't find it. I got it in the email today. The Department of Land Conservation and Development and ODOT. And there was just information about that there's no longer a seven-year cycle for updates to a comp plan. And that to change the TSP, it looks like you would need to amend the comprehensive plan and the, and the cost could kind of vary based on how big the change is. So I think a good next step forward might be like, we work with the community to identify what changes we want, so that way we can try to see how much that would cost.
So that typically would occur through like work sessions or what have you. The way that we have done these things in the past is that typically we put together a scope of work or some element of what we want to look at, and then we go for a grant. And then, once you have your project description, you have your scope of work, you figure out how much that's going to cost by asking your, our city engineers, our land use staff, and then we do a cost assessment sort of thing and kind of outline what that is. And then from there, you can take that scope of work and put it into a grant application, submit that grant application, and attempt to get funding, and then there turn around, hire consultants through an RFP process, bring consultants in, and then there's a long public process and we run through the typical aspect of every project that we, that we... So it would be very similar to how we did our concept plan, how we did our master plan, how we did our TSP, how we've done every DLC grant, TGM grant, Metro grant. Right now, Max is working on the parks grant for the kayak stuff down at the riverfront. There, we're constantly pursuing grants, but it is very hectic lately and we're trying to get our, get around everything.
Okay. So maybe our next step is just to schedule a work session to identify and work towards that scope of work. Okay. Cool. So we will...
So I have a question there. At our two meetings ago, I believe our city attorney said that he would look into this process and let us know what the cost might be and what the steps might be regarding ODOT and the other entity that you mentioned. Do we have a status on any of that?
Yeah. So I have a telephone call scheduled tomorrow with Metro's land use attorney. His name's Roger Alfred. I've been trying to schedule that call for quite some time and it just hasn't happened, but I heard from him today and he has time tomorrow. So fingers crossed that we're able to connect and then I'll be able to provide a report. That is, that is who has provided us the transportation grant funds in the past.
Sorry. You said he was with which organization?
Metro.
Okay. Thank you.
So Metro has a dedicated land use attorney and that's his division.
All right. Well, we will work to schedule a work session with the time that works with everybody and that way we can identify what changes and moving it forward.
Need a motion?
No, it was just a discussion today. Any other points of discussion from anybody else? Okay. Okay. New business. Before we get started with a, I did have an item that I had requested added to the agenda yesterday, but due to city staff being in, in union contract negotiations, it wasn't able to be added with the proper 24-hour notice. So I'm just going to take this time to move to add it to the agenda now. And what that is, is it's coming out of the vote that we took last week to hire a third party, a neutral third party, and the advice that I was given was to call our insurance company, which I did, and their recommendation was for council to hire special counsel for this matter, particularly since it did create a conflict for Mr. Watts. So the law firm they had recommended is Berry, Elsner, and Hammond. So I contacted them and they provided us with a contract agreement, which was sent to all the councillors yesterday in anticipation, in anticipation of this. So I would like to move to add to the agenda, discuss hiring special counsel. Second. All in favor? Huh? No, I would just like to do it first.
So we're just voting, we're just voting. So we're voting to put it on the agenda.
We're just voting to put it on the agenda at this point. Yeah. So...
Last...
Um, I would like to add... Sorry. Go ahead, Ben.
Can you hear me?
I can.
Peter Watts was rejected as one of the lawyers, but what about our other two lawyers, Rammus and Harris?
Right. We're going to add it to the agenda before we start talking.
Yeah. If we want, yeah. So right now, we, I just want to add the discussion to the agenda, add discussion of hiring special counsel to the agenda.
I seconded it. So it's just, we're just making a motion to amend the agenda to have a discussion.
Which, you know, I did request it be added yesterday and it would have been barring city staff not being out of the office. So, okay. All in favor adding it to the agenda?
Four, five. Five. Councillor Ardi D.
Go ahead. That's a yes, I guess.
Thank you. Yes. So that will be our next order of business. And I've kind of explained my process and reasoning for adding that to the agenda. It was recommended to me to contact our insurance company, which I did, and it was their recommendation to hire special counsel. And they gave me the recommendation of this offer, Berry, Elsner, and Hammond. And so I have just been following the recommendations that I've been given, and they provided us with a contract agreement that, that I would like for us to consider. Councillor Ardi, did you want to ask a question about this?
Well, we have two other lawyers besides Mr. Watts. And are you telling me that you don't believe those lawyers are competent to represent us?
No, that's not what I'm saying at all. It was brought to my attention that Mr. Watts used to work for Jordan Raymas Law Firm, and so I believe that that also creates a conflict in this situation.
Well, you all received a copy of a tort claim this afternoon. This, right now, this all should be tabled and discussed this in executive session, because the tort claim is very serious. So read what you have, table this discussion until executive session, and we'll take it up then, please.
Well, I disagree with councillor Ardi D. because we did talk to CIS. We talked to their council and this... and this was their recommendation, and it was their recommendation that we get a vote by city council in an open meeting to approve this council. So, Councilman Ardi, when the city's insurance council makes a recommendation that the council do this in an open meeting, I think if you comment on city council to discuss this in an open meeting and approve the attorney that the city's insurance company wants us to approve. That's a thought.
It's your thought, not my thought, sorry. This tort claim that came in changes things, I think you ought to look at it. But take your vote, because I'm going to abstain from this, because this just happened this afternoon. That changes some things, so read your paperwork, please.
Okay, I would just like to say that I think it's also, you know, because of the tort claim, it would be necessary to have special counsel specifically for this situation to avoid conflicts that we already have.
Do we have a scope of work? Because we only, I'm struggling with this, it's basically a time and material on an hourly rate, and I don't understand what the scope of work we're after. So there's like, to me, this is a contract that's written in an open checkbook, and there's no findable request here.
Okay.
So there's no scope of work. My second question is, I understand that they asked us to hire an outside council, I can support that, but why are we just going to want, and we're not putting in RFQ asking for qualifications from reasonable lawyers, and then we get to decide who is brought in? Is that what we're going to do?
Okay.
Oregon does have procurement laws that we want to make sure we're sticking with. I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, sure, so again, I, all I can say is that I've been following the advice that's been given to me. That was the advice given by our insurance company, and I'm trying to do everything by the correct process, and they had recommended them, they say that they work, this law firm works with a lot of their clients, and they came highly recommended, so that is why I took that.
I'd rather see a scope of work to understand where these billable hours are going to, so it's not, we're spending $100,000, $200,000 with unknown costs.
Sure.
Madam Mayor.
Yep.
In the interest of full disclosure, I worked out of Berry Elsner's offices for several years.
Okay. Alright. Well, there you go.
I have to say that I had the same thought that John already articulated, because it doesn't say why we're hiring the attorneys, what the scope of their work is, and approximately how much money we're going to be liable for. And so I think those are all weaknesses that I cannot support this the way it is.
Okay.
Well, we can certainly ask the attorney, can we ask them to give us a scope of work? Can you contact them and ask them?
Yeah, I mean, but if we are, you know, excluding Jordan Ramus for appearance of potential conflict, then I would, you know, also put that to, put that to this one, so I, yeah.
Yeah, can I hand the mic to Mr. Trompke over here?
Sure.
On work? Yes. Mayor, Council President, and Council...
Speak up, I can't hear you. I'm right into that microphone, sorry.
Can you hear me now? Come up, come up to the light there.
I'm coming to you from the great beyond, but I'm not dead, so I apologize.
Sometimes I feel like I may be in Hades myself, but I'm not tonight. Madam Mayor, Council President, and counselors, Ed Trompke, I'm with the firm of Jordan Ramus, I'm city attorney in a couple of cities, and we do special work for you folks. I do know a few things about this, and I looked through your contracting code. And with all respect to CIS, they didn't. And so your code has some provisions in it that require either advanced notice of about a week, published notice for a contract voted on by council, or three bids minimum, or another process requires soliciting more bids than that. There's only one way you could do this tonight, and I'm going to explain to you what that is, if that's okay. Which section? I'm reading from your ordinance number R 2012-03. Section A is personal services, and this is proposed to be a personal services...
Sorry, this is a resolution?
That is a resolution that adopted the most recent changes to your procurement.
My question about that is, like, it's not, resolutions that we pass are not accessible to anybody, so there's kind of no way to look that up unless you know what you're looking for. I did ask that, how do we find them, like? I need to know what we're working under, so I appreciate you having it.
I did have to ask for it too, I do have it, it's filed, but I have...
That poses a concern for me as mayor and for us conducting business as council, because I've only been here four and a half months, how am I supposed to know every resolution that's ever passed if I can't find it?
You can't, and you should ask your IT people to post it online. That would, that, and there are three or four different resolutions, but this one says that it supersedes two earlier ones. I don't know that it supersedes the one adopted in 1999, which is some 75 pages long, which I can't say I read the whole thing coming over here. But, and I'm not sure if that one's even in effect, but I have a copy of it too. But given that this is your process and procedure, I'm going to tell you what it is, so you know what it is, and the public knows what it is, if that's okay.
Can you give us a copy of it?
I'll leave you mine, it's a little marked up, but...
No, it's okay, but I mean, it would be helpful if you had to.
Not a problem. I'm talking about paragraph G of it, there's a paragraphs are not numbered, they're lettered.
You were, sorry, which resolution did you say it was again?
2012-03. My copy isn't a signed copy, but I'm assured that it gets adopted in sign. The best and easiest way to do this is to adopt it as an emergency resolu, emergency contract. And in order for that to happen, you don't have to vote. For transparency purposes, I think that it is beneficial for the mayor to hear everything you say. But what this says is, is that if there are three circumstances, then the mayor, another designee, or the city manager can make these three findings. If you, and I would recommend that it be you, make these three findings, then you can sign the contract, you don't have to discuss it with council, but I'm encouraging you to tonight, because everybody likes transparency. The three circumstances that you'd have to find is that the need for the contract arose due to unforeseen circumstances. And in this case, a couple of filings were made, grievances were filed last week, and that was the triggering event, not any tort claim notice that triggered this. They were filed, what, Friday, Thursday, or Friday, or maybe both on Thursday, but late last week. And the contract was then sought soon after by the mayor. She asked the Berry Elsner firm to submit one to it. I've looked at it, it does need a tighter scope of work, but the mayor has the authority, if she makes these findings, to define that scope of work and to sign it. And if you want to tell her to do that, that is very advisable. So the first is, excuse me, unforeseen circumstances. The second is that there's a substantial risk of loss, damage, or interruption of service. You would have to make the finding that there's a risk of loss in that if the grievances aren't dealt with in the 21 days after filing, then the city can be sanctioned and damaged in its reputation, and potentially, you know, legal or other administrative services can be interrupted. So I think that there are facts out there for you to make that finding also. And the third is, is that the first two have to require prompt execution of a contract. And in this case, there were 21 days from filing, and we're down to about 15 days left now. So there's not a lot of time to go back and forth and negotiate a scope of work and bring it back to the council. I think that it is imperative that the mayor do that herself and get it signed. And if you don't like it afterwards, you can criticize her for it, and maybe she can get it renegotiated downwards, or broader, or whatever, but it is, that is her prerogative, that is her job.
Okay, do you need a motion? I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Let's let him finish.
So, I mean, those are the three big things, yes, and lawyers tend to catch the chase, and that's not a problem, but you know, lawyers are full of words, too, so...
I appreciate it, I appreciate learning.
And I'm blindsiding you with this, we haven't spoken about...
No, we haven't.
So, so you should take this time and ponder those a little bit. You know, there, it's also important that the city's insurer recommended that this service provided, provider is a well-qualified provider to reduce the risk of loss and damage. And that's something that should enter into your ability to do it, here I am promoting as a competitive firm. That's what we do, though, as lawyers, when it's appropriate. And the short timeline again. So if the mayor is able to make those three findings, she can sign the contract, but she should listen to what you folks have to say about it. The other kinds of contracts are the typical big one, where you have to go out and do lots of bids, open bids, then there's an intermediate series, which you have to, the city has to actually seek three bids, excuse me. And then there's special procurements, but that requires published notice, published notice, a week in advance. You can't satisfy those and meet this timeline, so Madam Mayor, it falls to you to either declare an emergency or not.
I appreciate, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
And giving me all of that information. Again, I mean, this is a resolution from 2012, but, you know, how would I even know if I'm looking for it to find it? You can't find it, this one, I, I just kind of iterate, so I'm like, I'm just trying to follow my processes.
Would you share this with Councilor Braverman later? She did have to work, I'll give you my copy. If you have more questions, I'll answer, otherwise I'll step back.
Thank you, I do appreciate your time. Been at this for four months, four and a half months, prior to this. City council was not anywhere near my mind. I'm learning everything the best that I can, and dealing with everything as it comes the best that I can, and following the guidance that's given to me. When there are 13-year-old resolutions that I cannot find, that's something that, I mean, I'm constantly reading and rereading our municipal code and our charter, constantly researching things.
Is there a signed copy of this resolution? I don't know, Mr. Trompke, where did you get this resolution? Who gave it to you, and where can we get a signed copy so we know it's official? Not that I'm doubting you, but I would show, as a lawyer, to another lawyer, we like signed copies.
I obtained it from the city recorder. This copy came, I don't know, today or yesterday. The, there is another signed copy in my archive files, but I didn't print that one out. I printed it off the emails that I got from the city recorder, from Ronnie Smith.
So, after the meeting last week, there were a couple grievances filed against me that do need to be responded to within 21 days. So, and again, that is now in 15 days, so there is, there is a need for someone to help with that. I would like to hear what other people have to say.
So can we talk about the scope of work?
Absolutely, yeah.
Answer John Hartman's question.
Yeah, maybe we nailed down scope of work. That would be...
Well, it sounded to me like, Mayor, you have the right to declare it an emergency, and you have the power to sign the contract and get the scope of work, whether we think it or not.
Yeah, that is, that is what I heard, and, but I would still appreciate, you know, everyone's thoughts, and if scope is one of those things we need to talk about, I would like to do that as well.
I think we as a group really must do that, we've got...
Yeah, hey, this is a good time for us to come together and figure something out, right? So, let's see if we can do that, so...
So Counselor Hartman, what would, what would the scope of work look like to you?
I'd start with understanding what our goal is. I would be honest, I don't quite recall...
Speak up, John, I can't hear you.
With the scope of work, I'd like to start with what's the end goal we're, for the time of the term. So I don't, I apologize, I don't quite remember the word that we left with last meeting and what we were to go do. So can we restate what was the statement that we were going to get? I understand why you got them, but what was the, what was the statement of what we were getting? What were we asking ourselves to go find for this inspector to...
I'm confused by the question. Are you asking what we voted on last week, or what I talked to the law firm about?
Good question.
Probably.
Yeah. My, my response would be both, but if that's different, I'd like to understand.
Well, it shouldn't be different, I guess I just didn't know what you were, exactly what you were asking me. I don't remember exactly how the motion was worded from, Ronnie, do you have it? No, okay. So, we had, you know, due to our impasse of working together, really needed somebody to help us create a respectful workplace policy, help us work together, help us move forward. And then part of that was having a neutral third party also do an investigation. It's just the performance of the city manager, city attorney, is what we had voted on. Again, outside of, after that, same grievances and whatnot that we need to not see.
Get emergency created to have...
Get jettled to the way that thing happened last... Okay, it was a non-agenda item, we knew nothing about it, I was surprised. Now, maybe I'm not bright, but I was so surprised, I didn't even know what was going on. And so, I still feel that way, and so getting sucked into something else troubles me, and so that's my problem.
Yeah, this isn't getting sucked into something else, this is trying to course correct, right? What we, what we need, I mean, we need a special counsel to help respond to grievances. We need one, maybe to even help us reword what we voted on. The goal, the intent, is that we can come together and work together in a positive way. So maybe that was misconstrued. So that is, that's really the end goal, is how do we figure out how to work together, unintentionally created a conflict, so...
I'm a great believer in that.
Yes.
I didn't like the terminology that was used, it was aggressive, unacceptable, and that's where we got sucked in. Because if we want to keep this family cooperative, that's not the way to...
What, can you explain further about the terminology you were uncomfortable with?
Yeah, you went after our manager and said, "and our attorney", and, and you need to have them investigated, the inference is what?
Okay, that word maybe was not what should have been used. It was supposed to be for performance review, out, coming out of concerns from the community, coming out of, I wasn't meant to, my statement wasn't meant to be an attack. It was meant to simply outline some of the experiences that I've had over the past four months. So it was not meant to be an attack, so that is, I apologize for it being misconstrued, though.
I don't like inferences, and I don't like assumptions, Netflix. So, I don't even know that we can do anything about it now, it was just done poorly.
Allow me to speak in my...
Thank you. Okay, so we need to define an end goal, which I think at least is to just handle all matters related to...
Performance review. My only comment to that is if you read Mike's, read our city charter, what our rule is, or our role is the governing body in Mike's government, or Mike's employment contract, that's our job. I feel like we haven't been given the opportunity to do that. I'm saying that we shouldn't ask for help to do that, because I still think there's some things that all of us up here need to learn about being up here. But I'm struggling, a little different, I struggle with, but not being a part of the discussion. I feel like that is what I was brought here to do. I've told Mike, we, he, we absolutely should build him a performance. Because everybody says things, everybody has their opinions, but those are all opinions. I've sat here for as long as you have, and I've heard week after week, opinion. Nobody's ever put a guideline of a performance review saying what is Mike failing at, what is Mike succeeding at, including his entire team. The whole thing needs to be rewritten.
I completely agree with you.
So if that's the goal, I can support that. So, if that's the goal, I can support that.
Okay. I, I mean, can I ask, when is, how often are, do you normally have a performance review? Or when is the last time one has been done?
So typically it's up to the council.
Yeah.
Contract says yearly.
Yeah. But they haven't kept up with it. What they have done, I can tell you what they have done.
Okay.
It's just a, a person, maybe like an executive, impersonal, just reach out, thank you very much. Like everybody served with an evaluation sheet you could explore and boom, that, we haven't done that in the next.
Is there a process outlined that they have used in the past for a more formal, less informal type of performance?
Yeah, so what we had, this is a great question prior to the last meeting, but what we usually do is work with, I think, the older cities or other cities to get an evaluation form. Maybe we sit down in a work session and talk over like what the job description is, what my role is, what council's role is, and how we're filling those. So typically you would have a work session to develop what that, that review is going to look like.
And then the review would be in executive session?
Typically.
Or executive.
Yeah, typically you would notify your employee at any time that you would have been discussing a review. And then we would go into whether it's an executive session or a public session like we had last week. And.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, the only time the city council can give you feedback on performance is out of performance review? Is that what I'm hearing?
No, I disagree with that statement. That's a agreement.
Can the city council give you feedback on your work performance or is that taken in as humiliation and discrimination and harassment?
I'm fine with that. When there are basic accusations and I hold the plan or that I have issues with definitions of my character, those are the things that I'm concerned with.
Well, all of us are concerned with that too, but it seems like anytime we try to give you direction, in any, on any performance matter at all, it is met non-directional. I think what we need to do is get back, Mayor, to, I think it's an urgent situation. It's your decision. I'm very comfortable with the council's.
I would, I mean.
Resolution from 12 years ago, and I think you should take it under advisement and maybe speak with council and make your decision.
Was there anything else you wanted to add to this?
I, I think I just sensed the same thing. I believe in reviews, okay? I, I have probably given 10,000 in my life. But what Council Braverman just did is instead of stating something, she slammed him again. And, and I don't, I think that's just the wrong way to go at anything. I don't think you're going to get peace and harmony with that attitude. Obviously, it's a, it's an attorney's way of, of, of being aggressive, but it's not cool.
I would, I mean, I would argue that maybe she might take a stance to what, what it is that you just said. But nonetheless, we are still at an impasse. We are still trying to work together. We still need somebody to help us create all these things. There are, you know, ramifications that came out of last week. We need help with that. So because there is the emergent situation of it needing to be dealt with in a timely manner, I, I will declare this an emergency and, but I would still appreciate support in, because I don't believe that I should be given unilateral decisions to make anything and making any of these decisions, so.
Your advice, so.
Right. So I would, yes, appreciate everybody's support in just moving this forward and hopefully, you know, we can continue in the right direction. So, I would, I don't know what, how I do this properly. Do I just say I'm going to designate this a?
I think what I said is you get to sign that contract and move on, right?
But I have to declare it an emergency? I want to do, I gotta do things right, you guys.
You could either do it in writing or you can do it on the record here. And you can say that this was an unforeseen circumstance.
This was an unforeseen circumstance?
Uh, uh.
What were the others? I have it written down.
Fire, prompt loss.
There's a substantial risk of loss. Thank you. Where did I?
And, and those two factors require a prompt response. Oh, no, I've got it.
And those, oh, here we go. Okay. There is, there's a need due to unforeseen circumstances. There is a substantial risk of loss due to needing to respond to the grievances within the next couple weeks, and based off of these, there is a need for prompt execution of a contract.
And that you will take into, on, take under advisement, the scope of work as you understand council and the needs of the city?
Yes, I will take under advisement the scope as expressed by council and the needs of the city to enter into this contract. I would still like to take a vote. The council, vote support. Can we do roll call vote for this?
So is there a motion or?
I would like to move to accept this contract with Barry Elsner and Hammond on an emergency, due to an emergency.
Unforeseen circumstances.
Basically that. Yes, and then should we have a second?
Okay. And then, Councilor Harman, second. A motion and a second on, on the floor to hire Barry Elsner for emergency circumstances?
Well, yeah, but, yes, and then I will create the scope based on the council's discussion and needs of the city. Okay, that's part of it.
Yeah. There's, I guess, I, you know, I don't know where conflict of interest ends and ends. I'm looking at you because you're the, the, our elder wise counsel here. Okay?
I'll admit to being elder. How, what, what kind of a conflict do you?
I like to think with age comes wisdom.
What kind of conflict question are you asking?
Well, in that Peter brought up that he used to work for the firm that we're going to hire, but maybe that is beyond the time period where there should be any.
Yes.
I, I just want to be clear. That's, that's all I'm saying.
I think this is primarily for informational purposes so that you, you understand. So I left Jordan, I was a partner at Jordan Raymond for a number of years. I left that firm in 2018. I immediately moved my practice, the office, to Barry Elsner. So I, my office was actually next to Ashland. So I moved space from them through, I want to say, August of 19, so a year and a half I worked out of their offices. I helped them with some of their matters. They helped me with some of mine. I used to run legal, regularly discuss legal issues. I then moved to my current office in 2019.
You were in the space from them, but you weren't not like a member of the firm?
Right, so we had an agreement where I performed legal services for their clients and they performed legal services for mine, but I was not officially a member of their firm.
All right, we appreciate the conclusion. I know, do you see a conflict? I don't see a conflict.
No, I see no conflict.
I, I just want confirmation.
Thank you for the confirmation. Appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, it was a good question.
I might add something to, typically dealing with attorney things, something that you might want to have a discussion with or about in an executive session.
Yes.
Because there's a lot of needs to be addressed with it. And it seems like we don't have a, I don't know what scope it is. It seems like it's just going to be made up as we go. I'm not sure. So I don't know if this is an emergency just to deal with grievances or is this an emergency to deal with the ethics of things or the grievances or is this an emergency to deal with an investigation and grievances or conflict? I, I don't know what this is right now, so it's just wondering, maybe to get clarity on what exactly the scope of this is.
Well, we have a motion pending, this is seconded, and we really should cross the vote right now. I'm just trying to follow the rules. We've got a council of counsel. Do you agree with me, sir?
What are we voting on? Can you just declare an emergency? What we're not to make?
There isn't. I wanted to, I, I, I wanted to do it to, so that we can all be on the same page and it doesn't look like I'm unilaterally trying to make this decision because, like. Yeah, so, so it can be further delineated, but.
Let's have council give us advice here. We have a motion seconded and pending. We can table it if you want to.
Once the motion is made and seconded, no, this, no, this depends on your interpretations and whether you use Roberts Rule strictly or not. And, and I don't sit in on your meetings often. Some cities have a motion, a second, and then they have a further discussion. Some cities don't, they simply go to vote. Typically, strictly speaking, Roberts Rule says you go to vote after, but again, nobody does it the same way twice that I've ever seen.
I think we've typically done motions second discussed, and I think we've done that, and I would, I would like to vote just as formality of show of support, so. Yep. So we had a motion and a second, so let's go ahead and move it to a vote.
Counselor Hartman. Counselor Tyson.
No, because I don't know the scope of the work.
Counselor Braverman.
Yes.
Counselor Gerhart.
Yes.
Counselor Aridi.
I didn't hear all the votes. Can you read them back to me, please?
Sure. I have no votes from Counselor John Hartman, no votes from Counselor Jan Tyson, no votes from President Danny Delfin, yes vote from Counselor Jessica Braverman, and yes vote from Counselor Stephen Gerhart.
In light of this information that came in this afternoon, this tort came, this tort, uh, claim that I read, I'm going to protect all of you and vote to abstain until we, until we figure this out.
Say yes.
Motion fails at the 3:30.
So let's have an executive session to look at this tort claim.
So, so Mayor, I'm, I'm comfortable with what the council has given as your advice. I've got a copy of the resolution here. I've looked at it. So long as it's accurate, I think that the next step, it's nice that you asked us for a vote, but I think these are adjustment circumstances. We've been at an impasse for a long time. Everybody wants to get on the right page. If you feel this council is the right next step because the insurance company told you it was, I think our duty is to protect the city and to protect the city employees, and I think that the CIS has got that in mind, and so if you think that that's the right next step, I think you should just do it.
I think we all agree with that. The fact that the scope is just so undefined, that just makes us uneasy. That's the other reason I voted, to be very honest.
But she's done.
Her comments, you can make the final decision.
I trust that you'll get the scope ironed out and bring it back to us. That's what we discussed, and you said you would do that, so that's why I support you there. Um, yeah, I'm going to go ahead and move forward with the emergency contract. I would like to go into executive session after this, I think, to discuss further and we can work on the scope together. I really do feel like we, I do tonight? Okay. Um, I value everyone's opinion. Can you hear me when I say that? Trying to take the next rights test, and this was the advice given to me by our insurance company, so I am going to move forward with it because there are some things that need to be dealt with in a timely manner. And so that will begin our scope, and then I will define it further and maybe at that point, we need executive session or open session to continue the discussion, so. Okay. Want to do anything for that? No? Okay. All right. Thank you all for a, a good discussion around that. I appreciate everyone's input, I really do. All right, our next order of business is the public hearing for land use case LU 2024-03 annexation. I do have a good amount of stuff I need to read in relation to this because it's in a public hearing. Thank you all for joining. Ladies and gentlemen, we have scheduled one legislative land use hearing related to land use case number LU 2024-03, ordinance number 2025-01, an ordinance annexing a certain tract of land into the city limits of King City and withdrawing the tract from territory of Washington County, enhanced sheriff's patrol district, and to change the zoning designation from Washington County future development, 20 acre to city, King City zones, and, these spend neighborhoods. The hearing format for this proceeding is different than quasi-judicial land use proceeding, so members of the public provide testimony and scanner. Members of the public may participate in person, in writing, or both. We ask that a copy of all written materials be submitted to our King's mercy clerk so that they can be made part of the record for the proceedings. The grounds for an appeal of a legislative decision are contained in ORS Chapter 197, specifically ORS 197.620. If you wish, if you wish to speak for, against, or comment in any way, if you have materials, the city recorder needs a copy of them. For in-person testimonials, please write your name and all other required fields. For testimonials via Zoom, please write your name and indicate whether you are in support, in opposition, or neutral in the comments section. Names will be assigned a number in the order in which we receive comments in the chat box. Have we? Ronnie, have we received anything in the chat? Okay. When I call your number, please identify yourself and make your statement. The maximum time allotted for testimony shall be as follows. 15 minutes for applicants and person representing four or more persons. Four minutes for individuals, 10 minutes for applicant rebuttal. If your testimony would be repetitious, but you would like the opportunity to appeal the decision, you must sign the hearing sign-in sheet located at the rear of the council chambers, or type your name in the chat box, or let staff know, and they will type your name in the chat box. Only those who have appeared before the city council in person, Zoom, or in writing will be allowed to speak on appeal of this item to the Land Use Board of Appeals. Please be advised that all participants in person or via Zoom are expected to conduct themselves respectfully and professionally. Interruptions of public meetings containing inappropriate comments, hate speech, sexually explicit content, foul language, or any language suggesting bodily harm to others will not be tolerated. If any participant engages in such conduct, the mayor reserves the right to immediately mute and remove the offending individual from the meeting. This action aligns with our commitment to maintaining a safe and respectful environment for all participants. By joining this meeting, you acknowledge and agree to adhere to the. Public hearing. I call to order the public hearing regarding land use case number LU 2024-03 at 8:20 PM. It's a legislative hearing, so we do not follow the strict ex parte disclosure requirements. Mr. Ruston, please read the ordinance number 2025-01 by title only.
We're reading the ordinance 02025-01, an ordinance annexing a certain tract of land into the city limits of King City and withdrawing the tract from the territory of Washington County, enhanced sheriff's patrol district, and to change the zoning designation from Washington County future development, 20 acre to King City zone, these spend neighborhoods.
Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the jurisdiction of the city council to hear this matter? Please state your name and address for the reference. Hearing none. Does any member of the city council want to disclose any actual or potential conflicts of interest?
I don't know exactly where this is. Can someone give me a better idea?
Counselor Braverman, I'll play tonight's report.
Well, I don't know if I have a conflict. I live in Edgewater. Do I need to disclose that or do I need to say that I have, I have an abstain?
If you look at the planning, commission, recommendation, it's in front of you. There's a map that shows where this lives relative to the areas around it, so it's near the intersection of 137 and Beatty Men. I'm immediately addicted to Edgewater, but. It's like to maybe to judge, Counselor Braverman, it's all burdens in a situation where you're uncertain to say that you have a potential conflict of interest.
Sure, but I also would have to, I would have to abstain from voting if I have an actual conflict, so I wanted to find out.
That's fair.
That's the part of ethical, I understand. That's the proper, ethical, I understand.
It is not in Edgewater.
Is it okay if we take, I have to run to the restroom.
Can I do that after I've called it over? Yeah? Does anybody else want a break? Yeah, let's take a five-minute recess. Stretch your legs.
I appreciate you, I hope you understand why I wanted to vote.
That's boring to me, I don't understand it, I want you to explain it to me. Yes.
Just for what it's...
Do you approve it?
Yeah, so, you know...
Again, I will just say that I'm just...
Yes.
That's for you, I... And I have a question, I'm totally, I mean, definitely not sure, I know if it's not open checkbook, I would think that everything that's in the box, that's the first we go...
Yeah, five-minute break. I don't... I think it'll tend to be, gets them another day. I hope.
So, like my question, if we're investigating, we're investigating what is claimed, because...
So, and I think that's probably the issue, because it wasn't, again, it wasn't on the agenda anyway, was it? I was just thinking more like, if that happened, then it... My question, my question, Crayon. Yeah, so anyways, bye-bye.
Somebody's going to have to give me a best thing.
Well, tell somebody else to leave them for now.
The mic's off.
Yeah, okay.
So, Washington County is willing to go ahead and ALET and talk with you guys next meeting.
Yeah. For TFS stuff? Yeah, no, I would love it if they could come, because, I mean, the more information, like, information is key, right? And I think the car has just been like, well, how do we do it? What are the steps? Like, there, you know, none of us know, it's just, yes, more information, that'd be great. You said you were in contact or you knew somebody, could you have that person send an email, or...
They're in contact, or email, yeah. I talked with them today, I talked with Garrett, and said, oh, you can get people different...
Yeah, if they want to, yeah, reach out, or if I can get their information, and we can kind of figure out...
I did go over there today with...
Over where?
Over 137th and also to April, whatever it's called, April 1st. Well, that's all part of this Kensington thing.
The Sharlin was something different, Sharlin is up...
Right, I didn't do the Sharlin, I did the Kensington.
Yeah, I think it's, well, I mean, it's right there, Kensington Square, Kensington Square, East Bend, and...
Right, but, you know, because Gretchen knows an awful lot about transportation, she does, and she's done a lot of land use attorney work and stuff, and I said, as I'm reading this, I have questions and confusion, would you take me over there? So I picked her up at her house, and we went over there and parked the car, and walked, and she showed me the various concerns, and that the, and she said that only kind of viable but temporary solution would be to have a three-way stop at 137th.
I think I saw that in the condition...
Yeah, and that we don't own that road, Washington County does, and so...
There's been a lot of issues around it.
It's difficult to vote when you don't know what they're talking about. A tort claim came in this afternoon. That will have you...
Okay, calling the meeting back to order at 8:33, continuing on with our public hearing for land use case LU 2024-03, just checking here where we left off. I don't know that we concluded that does any member of the city council want to disclose any actual or potential conflicts of interest? Does any member of the audience wish to challenge any individual member of the city council? Okay, for all those wishing to testify, please be aware that if you fail to raise an issue in person, Zoom, or by letter today, or to the city council, you will be unable to raise that issue at a subsequent time on appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals. Testimony and evidence must be directed toward the criteria that staff will describe, or other criteria in the plan or land use code which you believe apply to the decision. Failure to specifically address the approval criteria that staff will describe also precludes the raising of an issue related to those criteria on appeal. At this time, I call for the staff to present a proposal along with applicable approval standards and make a recommendation.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, counselors.
Oh, sorry, sorry, jumping, I'm going to hand it off to Max, but I just want to thank Max and Ezra for their hard work on this project, Max has been working on this for some time since early January, I think, and their group from Kensington Square for the time that they created this and their patience as we worked through this. So, with that, many of you are aware of what the project is, if you have any questions on the, you know, East Bend and 137th, and it's ultimately 15 acres, 10 acres, 15 acres, and has about 87 units, and it's a John's, I'm going to hand it off to Max, he's going to give a far more detailed description on this project and how it meets and conforms to the state law. The first one is an annexation, the second one is a subdivision, so I'm going to hand it off to Max. The key here is that we have to adopt the annexation prior to the subdivision approval, and so we also have to do this in two phases. First, it's going to be the first reading and the public hearing which we're conducting tonight, then we will have to come back at a subsequent meeting and conduct the deliberation, the vote, and the second reading for final adoption. All right, with that, I'm going to hand it off to Max.
I'm sorry, hold on one second. Do I need to make a statement that Counsel Braverman has left? Okay, she left, it is excused, continue.
Hey, Senator Mayor. All right, so the Kensington Square and Station LU 2024-03, it deals with the four properties currently unincorporated in Washington County within the city's urban growth boundary, approximately 7.13 acres. This annexation is an application that was brought to the city with 100% consent from the property owners and the registered voters in the four properties in question, so this was consent-driven annexation application to the city with the intention on future development. When the city takes these kinds of applications into account, we look at specific criteria, the primary one within the city code is Chapter 16192 Annexation, which is in the King City Community Development Code. So, looking through 2016192, essentially it just has the middle requirement that the applicant is required to submit to the city that proves exactly without shadow of a doubt what properties are being annexed, there's certification from Washington County that prove that the property owners do in fact own those properties, there's seeds, there's existing condition plans, so they tell you about what's there right now. Currently, there's four homes, as long as, as well as some accessory dwellings, they're all being accessed either on 137th or East Bend. They also have to provide service availability letters from water, sewer, farm water management to prove that city services and regional services and service these annexed properties in the event of new development. And just going into my findings as far as how these apply to 16192, as I mentioned, the applicant provided the city with all required documents that prove that they were in fact doing 100% consent, they had petitions signed, they had certification from Washington County. One principle in King City Annexation Code of 16192, there are 100, there is protection of heavily significant weapons. One of the pieces exhibits that the applicant provided with the city was a concurrent letter for a wetland delineation, which is a legal document that weapon scientists will go out and use to map wetlands on the properties, so it did send an inventory of wetlands on those properties, and they submitted to the Department of State Land for review, and they sent the concurrent letter from the Department of State Land that basically said that they approved, and they concurd with the findings of the wetland delineation. So, for all intents and purposes, the applicant provides the city with definitive proof of an inventory that shows the absence of wetlands on these properties. In addition to that, census was a provision that was required to be put into our code by the Department of Land Conservation and Development, the LTP. The applicant requested that we reach out to state staff to further strengthen the case that there are no wetlands, and just to really cover our bases on the fact that this LWI provision is satisfied, so I have a statement, I have a report, something else, and yes, that potentially say that they recognize there are no wetlands on the properties, and that land use goal number five, which is the goal to protect weapons and natural resources, is satisfied. The other approval criteria, such as the King City Compland, the KTMT, Metro, Oregon, Chapter 222, those are all, a lot of them are kind of like ministerial requirements, that notice requirements for the city, those requirements from the state, running the yawn-happing, but essentially they met all the criteria. There is a couple of revisions to my finding, specifically the Kensington Master Plan, on page 13, number two, says that ensuring the new development is consistent with the KTMT, which is the Kensington Master Plan, and it says that the city will work with the applicant to develop an annexation and development agreement. That was initially our thought, but after discussing with the applicant's attorney and our representative, representation, we thought that, you know, it's not a surefire thing that that development agreement is necessary, so I would just like to amend that finding to include the word "if necessary" at the beginning of that.
Can you tell me which page again you're on? We got 13th paper.
The staff report.
Okay, and then where on there?
Number two.
Number two, got it, okay.
I just recommend that we put "if necessary" just to provide the city with the option, but not necessarily require a development agreement in the future. And so all of this across the planning commission in April, they held a hearing over two separate meetings, and generally, how these hearings kind of go when there's a planning commission hearing, and they make a recommendation to the city council. The city council considers the planning recommendation very strongly, and generally agrees with the planning commission, because they spend months, and they've met with the applicant multiple times, and are heavily involved with the entire process of the meeting. And so, after the hearing, the end on April 23rd, the planning commission recommended approval to the city council subject to conditions of approval, which is in the little two-page document. I also presented to you guys the official recommendation. On page three, you can find the conditions, and it would also let you recommend a couple minor amendments to the recommended conditions, so... So condition number one states that future development of the annexed properties will be approved upon approval of the development plan review subdivision application LU twenty twenty-four dash oh seven. So that is the, the other hearing that we will hear after this. I would recommend that we amend that condition to be more broad. If then that LU twenty twenty-four oh seven does not get approved, to say that future development of the annexed properties will comply, comply with and adhere to the Kingston Terrace Master Plan. That just sort of stacks the city in the sense that any, any development in the future, no matter what, will comply with the master plan for the area, which in this case would still apply to the development application in the next year. And then condition number four states that a letter of concurrence of my Washington County hires the annexation of a portion of Southwest one thirty-seventh Avenue included in the annexation application. If you look at the legal description map in the staff report on page three, basically, Washington County excluded a portion of one thirty-seventh Avenue. So currently, you annex the station road, so you have that right of way. It was in the, Washington County did not want to include that right of way because the city has had ongoing negotiations to annex the entirety of one thirty-seventh as part of our project to also annex the water bill power administration corridor for the West Side Trail. So they said, well, let's just couple those two pieces together and completely separate them from the annexation for the Kensington Square properties. So I would just completely erase condition number four. With that being said, we did receive a letter of consent from Washington County earlier today, which I also put in front of your chairs, that states that they consent to these four properties being annexed into the city as herein to our cooperation agreement with the county through. So that, with all that being said.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Because you just said something about this being, this annexing West Side Trail. Is that part of this?
This is decoupled with.
Decoupled, thank you, because I was like, huh.
It's always separate.
Thank you.
And that was what Washington County wanted to clarify, so that's why they removed. Additionally, if you look at the map, this section of one thirty-seventh was also part of it.
Okay.
And Washington County said, well, if eventually the city is going to annex all of one thirty-seventh, you'll just keep one thirty-seventh intact, and so it's only going up to the property line.
Okay.
And nothing beyond.
So in the fact that that developer destroyed that part of one thirty-seventh, there's nothing in your holdings accountable to one thirty-seventh?
That would be the county's responsibility to hold them accountable. I like that. Yeah, I also like that. Well, the applicant that part of the development approval will be required to do improvements on one thirty-seventh and East Bend. But they'll have to go through town, county to clarify on that. The applicant still has to meet the city's road standards, but will also need to coordinate with Washington County. So they will still need to improve this segment of road that is adjacent to their subdivision. But that's going to be under the center of our presentation here. And then the strip along East Bend.
And so the whole intersection of one hundred and thirty-seventh and East Bend.
Is outside of curfew of the city of King City.
So there's nothing we can do about the safety issues there?
It's not on my city, unfortunately.
That's too bad.
Yes, but if you look at the consent letter that is. County staff has drafted the following specifications. They identify the safety concerns on one hundred and thirty-seven. Their first point, and then their second point, the county. County staff has identified the need to formally document a shared understanding and look forward to working with the city to ensure the ultimate improvement to the modification.
You can't hear anything.
Max, sorry, could you use the mic again? Vince is saying he can't hear you.
Come up here. We're on the, with the Washington. Yeah, he was reading the.
Okay, thank you. Go between.
Walk, getting out of here. I'm reading it right now. County staff have identified the need, formally document a shared understanding, and look forward to working with the city to ensure the ultimate improvements or modifications to the intersection of Southwest one thirty-seventh Avenue and Southwest East Bend Road that are necessary to resolve the site distance and street spacing concerns that will be exacerbated by any developments. Communications of the county have basically been that they are of the mind that they are not trying to influence any kinds of land use decisions. However, they are recognizing that there is a safety concern and based upon previous conversations with county staff about one thirty-seventh and East Bend, that this makes it more important for us to start prioritizing improvements to that intersection in the event of the development being approved.
But there's nothing scheduled at all, not even in the near future or future?
Current negotiations being worked out, but it's kind of in the county's court right now. We're passing a, an unofficial agreement back and forth, but ultimately that will come to the city council and have to be negotiated and. We're working to try to get provisions in place that create a strict schedule and funding mechanisms to actually have actionable plans to improve the intersection.
And that crosswalk there where the curb is, it's been recently? It should really all be painted bright orange or yellow or something.
But again, that's all, that entire intersection is in the county.
Yeah. I'd be painting myself.
And I just want to specify, even though the city limits extend to the center line of East Bend to continue out, that doesn't necessarily mean we have the jurisdiction to work on that road or the jurisdiction to do improvements on. That jurisdiction is held by Washington County. So we have to assert a, a consideration of.
Hey, Gretchen, who is so. Called her up and she kindly went with me over to this area just so that I could walk around and physically see the issues. Oh, man. The traffic thing really has to be resolved.
City councillors, if I may.
Sure.
City councillors, if I may, again, Ezra Hammer, for arrangements for the record, I'm stepping in for your city attorney to support on this issue. Just to provide a little bit more color about that intersection because it's certainly been a topic of conversation. As part of your transportation system plan, that intersection was identified toward improvement. Those improvements are supposed to occur outside of city limits within Washington County on the northern side of the intersection, either via roundabout or signalization or some other form of management. And the county is identified as the principal party responsible for funding those improvements. So that particular condition, as I understand it, was put in at the direction of the. As Max mentioned, the city has been attempting to work with the county to sign a memorandum of understanding that would spell out timeframes for determining a plan, building out a plan, and paying for the plan. And I believe our most recent draft is with the county and has been with the county for several weeks.
Thank you.
Does, you guys have any questions for staff?
Uh, councillor Dee Dee, do you have any questions? He's still here? I did know he was going to drop off at some point, so note of that, that he is. Okay, he, I knew he was going to drop off at some point, so let's just make a note of that, that he's no longer here. I don't see any other questions. No? Okay.
Now you go back to this.
Got it, thank you. So at this time, I call for the applicant to present their proposal.
For the record, I'm Cody Johnnycheck with Ken Randa Holmes, the applicant. Max, thank you for your presentation, mayor, members of the council. So as you heard, we, this is a two-part application. The annexation is the more straightforward part since it's a hundred percent annexation. There's a lot of good questions and concerns already coming up. A lot of that is more addressed, appropriate addressed in the subdivision application as opposed to the annexation application, so we'll dig into that more in part two of this. The, with me today are Andrew Stamp, my land use attorney, and the next to him, Steve Kay, my planner. So like I said, this is, should be, or the request for annexation is pretty straightforward as we have four current homeowners that are asking for a one hundred percent consent annexation into the city limits. The, that we've submitted the application on their behalf. So we'll be asking for your approval for this one hundred percent annexation into the city limits, and then we can jump into the, the part two, the subdivision application next, where we cover one thirty-seven and East Bend and Stormwater, sewer and all the interesting topics. So with that, I just want to hand this over to my land use attorney, Andrew Stamp.
Honorable mayor and members of the city council, my name's Andrew Stamp. I am a land use attorney at firm VF Law. Our address is six thousand Meadows Road, Suite five hundred, Lake Oswego, nine seven zero three five. As Cody mentioned, we're here tonight for two land use entitlements. They're going to be handled in two separate hearings. This one is the annexation portion. I want to thank staff for all their hard work on this case. You know, when I got started with this in August, we realized there's a lot of complexity in the King City Annexation Code, particularly with the master plan being adopted prior to it coming into the city. So there was a lot of complexity and, you know, we worked through a lot of those issues with staff, or I should say all the issues with staff. And we went to hearing and our annexation application, as opposed to our subdivision application, which generated some, some heat, our annexation applicant proved to be quite non-controversial. And as Max said, there, there isn't a whole lot going on with the annexation application that is before you tonight. It's relatively straightforward because of the fact that we did a hundred percent consent annexation. And just to be clear, there's three types of consent applications, hundred percent consent, triple majority and double majority, you heard Peter talk about those. Those are methods for not having or disposing with an election in the territory to be annexed. So whenever everyone comes forth and says, we want to annex, then you don't have to have an election in the territory. That's the purpose of that consensual annexation. You guys also talked about non-consensual annexations, specifically island annexations and health hazard annexations. Those are a different animal. You're obviously dealing with those in a different context, but those aren't relevant tonight because of the consent. Obviously, the consent annexations are kind of the easiest ones because you're not forcing anyone to come in, you know, without their desire. The criteria for the annexation are set forth in your code, section one ninety-two. I could say that a lot of the criteria procedural, the substantive criteria are, is the annexation consistent with the Kingston Terrace Master Plan? And you as a city have decided that that is territory that you want in the city because you want to develop it pursuant to the terms of the master plan. And so it very much is consistent. Our, our annexation application is consistent with that simply by virtue of the fact that we're asking to be annexed. The details of what we want to develop are relevant to the subdivision application. They're not really so much relevant to the Kingston, to the annexation application. Max did mention the wetlands issue. You know, part of the, part of the story there was you guys wanted to annex or develop the master plan prior to the time that you had complied with goal five. And goal five is a, is a planning goal that deals with open space natural resources such as wetlands. And DLCD basically came up with a deal with the city and said, okay, we'll let you adopt this master plan even though you haven't quite finished your goal five wetlands piece so long as you look at wetlands at the time of annexation when any individual piece of property wants to annex. In our case, we actually hired a scientist, you know, a wetland specialist to go out on the property and dig test holes and kind of determine whether or not there's any wetlands on the property. As Max said, they determined there were no wetlands on the property, and therefore, our wetlands inventory is essentially a blank piece of paper. Because, you know, a wetlands, a local wetlands inventory is a list of all your wetlands. Since we don't have any wetlands on the property, we don't really need to add anything to the list. And so with that quick explanation, I think it is, it was not controversial in front of the planning commission, it shouldn't be controversial tonight that we should get annexed. Unless there's any questions or if you'd like some clarification on annexation. Hearing none, I think that concludes the applicant's presentation. We tried to keep it really short for you, I hope you appreciate that.
Um, does any member of the audience wish to speak in favor of this application? Hearing none, um, does any member of the audience wish to speak in opposition to this application? Any names I have on here, I think Gretchen La, Carl Swenson and Jack Etling.
Should have been on the four.
Four, okay, let's go back. Okay, so does any member of the audience wish to speak in favor of this application? Carl or Jack, yes, Jack, okay. Put your name and your address to the record.
Good evening, my name is Jack Etling, thirteen nine seven zero Southwest Beef Bend Road. I am a part owner on one of the properties that are subject to this annexation that you have before you tonight. And my wife and I are here in support of the Kingston Terrace Plan as a whole. It has undergone a long and thorough approval process, which has met all of its needed requirements as well as two city planning commission meetings to review the proposal during which time the community, the commission unanimously approved the plan. The builder has spent a tremendous amount of time and effort in listening to the community and addressing concerns as much as possible. Currently, our country and state are in the middle of a housing crisis. According to Oregon's chief economist, the state needs to increase home building by twenty-nine thousand five hundred homes per year to emerge from the crisis. For many folks, especially the, of the younger generations, homeownership is not currently a reality or rather just a dream. Kingston Terrace won't fix that on its own, but it certainly can help. I'd like to, I think the council and the people of Kingston for their consideration.
Thank you. And does any member of the audience wish to speak in opposition to this application? Carl Swenson, you're left on my sheet. Did the annexation one. On the annexation one. You're on the annexation one, do you want your name moved over? Okay. Does anyone wish to provide neutral comments? Hearing none, does the applicant have any rebuttal? Okay, the councillors have any questions for staff? Hearing none, at this time, I would ask for a motion to continue the public hearing on June eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. Oh, sorry, yeah.
What we want to do is we want to close the public testimony. Continue the hearing.
Okay, so that concludes our public testimony. We will move forward with the hearing to second, well, we'll call it the second hearing.
Yeah, the second reading.
The second reading on June eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. Need a motion. At six-thirty, thank you, sorry. Six-thirty, okay, this says six, are we sure it's six-thirty? I think it's like six.
Up to you, mayor.
Let's do six. Twenty-five.
I just want to make sure I have the.
Sorry, it's six o'clock. Yes, okay. Still moved? Okay. Second by councillor Gearhart. Um, and roll call vote, please. And roll call vote please.
Councillor Hartman. President Gilpin.
Yes.
Mayor Goodman.
Yes.
Motion carries five here.
Carl, do you want to sign in for the subdivision one? Okay, um, that is that one. Okay. That concludes our public hearing for land use case number LU-2024-03 annexation. Next on our list is public hearing for land use case number LU-2024-07 Kensington Square Development and Subdivision. All right, tonight we have another land use hearing related to land use case number LU-2024-07 Kensington Square Development and Subdivision. You may also name and address any other approval criteria you think apply to this decision. Failure to raise an issue in person, Zoom or by letter to the city council precludes raising that issue at a subsequent subsequent time on appeal. If the city council decision is appealed, the council may or may not allow new evidence. If you wish to speak for, against, or comment in any way. If you have materials, the city recorder needs a copy for the record. For in-person testimonials, please write your name and all other fields required. For testimonials via Zoom, please write your name and indicate whether you are in support, in opposition, or neutral in the comments section. Names will be assigned a number in the order in which we receive comments in the chat box. When I call your number, please identify yourself and make your statement. The maximum time allotted for a testimony shall be 15 minutes for applicants or persons representing four or more persons, four minutes for individuals, 10 minutes for applicants rebuttal. If your testimony would be repetitious, but you would like the opportunity to appeal the decision, you must sign the hearing sign-in sheet located at the rear of the council chambers. I have it though, so if you need to sign it, you need to come to me. Type your name in the chat box or let staff know. They will type your name in the chat box. Only those who have appeared before the city council in person, Zoom or in writing will be allowed to speak on appeal of this item to the Land Use Board of Appeals. Please note that unless there is a continuance of this hearing, if a participant still requests before the conclusion of the hearing, the record shall remain open for at least seven days after the hearing. If the record remains open, such an extension shall not be subject to the so-called 120-day limit. I call to order the public hearing regarding land use case number LU-2024-07 pertaining to Kensington Square Development and Subdivision at 9:05 p.m. Do any members of the council wish to abstain? Hearing none. Do any members of the council wish to declare a conflict of interest? Hearing none. Are any members of the city council unable to hear this matter due to bias? Hearing none. Do any members of the city council wish to report a significant ex parte contact?
What's that?
That I that I was what?
Were taken to the site.
Oh, I requested that Gretchen Boehner gave give me a tour of the intersection so that I could have a better understanding of what the traffic issues were. If that is expertise, then. Again, okay. Thank you for keeping me straight.
Purpose of the rule is so that you don't introduce evidence that's outside of the record. And so basically what we want to do is explain what is about that, what you saw that would be relevant to the case search. That's the purpose of closing that site visit.
Sure. I guess my my impression was is that's a really tight ingress and egress for this development, the way the road stands, the way the road is situated now. And and I and I'm glad that council is, or I mean, staff is working with Washington County to come up with a remedy. And so that's my thought.
Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the jurisdiction of the city council to hear this matter? Hearing none. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge any individual member of the city council? Hearing none. For all those wishing to testify, please be aware that if you fail to raise an issue in person, Zoom or by letter today or to the council, you will be unable to raise that issue at a subsequent item on appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals, LUBA. Testimony and evidence must be directed toward the criteria that staff will describe or other criteria in the plan or land use code which you believe apply to the decision. Failure to specifically address the approval criteria that staff will describe also precludes the raising of an issue related to those criteria on appeal. At this time, I call for the staff to present the proposal along with applicable approval standards and make a recommendation.
Thank you, mayor. If I may, I'm just going to give a brief introduction on this. Typically, a subdivision is usually handled by our planning commission. Because this is tied to the annexation approval, then it gets elevated to what we call type four, which comes forward to you. There's no ordinance covered for this because it's not an ordinance, so we can't approve this without the annexation being approved first. So therefore, that's why this is in your board now. That's why you are hearing this land use proceeding instead of the planning commission. What the planning commission does do is recommend approval of this subdivision based on the code criteria and and rules that are laid out. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Carter to do his presentation and staff report on this particular subject.
Thank you.
Question, thank you, council. So the applicant is proposing an 87-unit subdivision over these 7.13 acres in question over the intersection of Southwest 137 and Beef Bend Road. Included in the subdivision of 87 units, they're they're attached housing, so panelic townhomes. There's also a stormwater facility located in the southeast portion of the site. And then on the very southern portion of the site, the half-street improvement in line with the transportation system plan, that's going to be a neighborhood route. And so the applicant has signed all these standards in the code as well as go through the appropriate agency approvals for their for their configuration of their stormwater facilities and all their utilities. So the approval criteria for a subdivision is different than an annexation in the sense that it is quasi-judicial, meaning that there is essentially zero discretion that the governing body can use. So you can't say that I don't like this, so I'm going to deny it unless you have legal grounds with it. And as Chair Gretchen Boehner mentioned in the public testimony portion earlier, or the public comments earlier of this very meeting, not of this hearing, State Law has essentially been designed in a way to restrict cities' ability to deny housing applications with that exact intent of building housing due to governor's housing crisis that's identified. So with that being said, the criteria for approval for this development is listed on the staff report, which you'll find in this document right here. A little bit thicker than the other staff reports. And if you'd like, I could just kind of go through each of the chapter sections and a brief summary on what exactly the applicant is complying. So chapter 1646 requires community meetings within the community development code that requires that all land use applications advertise and hold community meetings for the folks who are in the immediate vicinity of the where the land use development will be taking place. And the applicant provided the city with ample proof that they had signage, they had mailing affidavits, and not only did they hold the one required meeting, they met with property owners in the area at least twice, as far as I'm aware, after receiving feedback from their initial meeting, they went above and beyond what was expected of them and required of them and met a second time. So that criteria is satisfied. And then chapter 16114 is the Kingston Terrace District Code, which generally applies to all land use developments within the Kingston Terrace District. And so that is the district code that we use for this kind of land use because it is in Kingston Terrace District, which starts just west of 137 and stops east of Lord Roberts. So 16114, design purpose, applicability and standards essentially goes into the way that houses are designed. So they're meant to sort of have character in neighborhoods. You have to have houses that have different design characteristics that are unique. And so basically, let me go. Also goes into density. So Metro, when we adopted the Kingston Terrace Master Plan, set forth different density requirements. As if the properties are annexed, then they will be automatically rezoned into the Beef Bend neighborhood, which requires a minimum density of 18 units per lot or 18 units per acre. And they have provided us with more than what is minimally required. As I mentioned, 16114060 kind of goes into some of the more design aspects of the houses themselves, so like porch steps, window height, blazing, which ways that the houses are oriented. The applicant complied with all of those. The regulating plan just basically states that the designer, the neighborhood location is in the Beef Bend neighborhood and also identifies exactly what zoning requirements might be. So that's not really an approval criteria. 16114080 is the Kingston Terrace District GOAL V State Harbor Review. That chapter does not apply because there are no wetlands identified on the property. 1114090 is the Upland Wildlife and Habitat Conservation Areas, which we use a map, a Title 13 map, which identifies regional natural resources, which has been provided to the city and implemented in the metro. That map also indicates that there are no Upland Habitat Conservation Areas on site. The neighborhood locations and primary land uses just basically say what you can build in these certain zones. And this specific subdivision is only residential, which is allowed in the Beef Bend neighborhood. Parks, open space and trails give you some parameters for what kind of parks and trails that you should be building. There are no parks proposed with this application, so that criteria does not apply. Neighborhood circulation just makes it where the applicant must provide the city with a traffic impact study that is approved by the city engineer and also has to show how circulation will operate within configuration of the huge shape for a sense, which also leaves areas for future development to occur. And the city engineer signed up on a traffic impact study that then established criteria for that. Parking and loading, there are no off-site or off-street parking. Personal development, as opposed to applications that don't comply. Provision of adequate public facilities means that their places have to be up to the city standard and their utilities and services have to be, have to have availability to serve service, not only the subdivision itself, but also future development. The applicant will be pulling tiger water down from Beef Bend and also running sewer lines down to sewer line over near headquarters. So all of those approvals have to go through those various utility organizations. But the all the permitting and everything is kind of outside of purview of the city. We just looked at it as the
Am I allowed to ask a question? I just was seeing at the bottom of that page 29, under what you were just talking about, provision of adequate public facilities. There's a part that says annexation agreement, the city attorney and manager waives requirement for annexation. Can you just speak to that further, please? Sorry.
So again, with, for example, when we did the annexation of the town center, the annexation agreement had a lot of different provisions that basically facilitated the future development and made it towards development in the future and the town center and annexation work together well. Mike can speak a little bit more.
An annexation agreement is an agreement between us and the developer on what terms we're expecting. It could be road improvements, it could be we want data, we want, it's an agreement between us, the developer, of things that might, may or not, may or may or may not be required for our code, but there are portions of things that we feel we need prior to annexation, right? So there's still some legalities there that we have to walk. We have to walk very thin lines. So like we can't do road improvement at the intersection was one of those things where we felt we couldn't necessarily draw the nexus to request those road improvements because that developer doesn't own those properties. We think we can draw the nexus. But we're already charging system development charges that will go into funds that will later fund street improvements of that nature. The other thing that you'll see with Max, and I was going to ask Max to speak about this with his recommendations. Recommendation tonight from the staff is for a conditional approval. And one of the primary conditions that he has up there is that the annexation be approved next time.
Okay, so just.
I mean, we are still, it's still needed to do an annexation. But the annexation agreement is what we feel was not necessary based on the fact that the subdivision doesn't have anything special and has no special needs that we need to wait for.
Thanks.
16114150 is development plan review process. That just spells out all of the requirements that the applicant must do and must submit to the city for review to initiate this development. Site plans, post-division plans, preliminary grading plans, city review, subdivision plans, to make sure that the as well, the preliminary plan will work within the confines of the master plan. Architectural elevations and floor plans so that we can see what the homes will actually look like and where they'll be, like how they'll be configured within the actual development. And then as well as secret service provider letters from the various utility agencies and properties. So it's a lot of the same kind of redundant stuff from the annexation, but also some of the more specific stuff as to what you would actually, what are you actually putting on those lots themselves. And that is all listed in the beginning of the first and all the exhibits and also available online. All of the exhibits.
So a quick question, Max.
Yeah.
When this is all built out, will it look something like River Terrace?
No, it'll be more dense. I'm not sure how many townhomes are up at River Terrace. I think there's a couple of them. But it's, since it's only seven acres, it's kind of isolated, it's smaller. I don't think there's a neighborhood in King City that quite replicates this.
There are neighborhoods in River Terrace that would look like this. Actually, if you go up to, what is it, Jean or John? Yeah, Jean Lewis Road, you'll see some units there that are shared wall units on both sides of the road. Once you get in a block or two, just off River Terrace Boulevard, that's kind of the density that you'd be seeing from the
And the road width and all that and the landscaping.
I believe the road width might be a local street, 27 footers?
Well, the top of the horseshoe is a local street, so they're kind of narrow. And then the one street on the south end is a neighborhood street. So that would be wider, but since it's only going to be developed on the half, like it's only a half-street improvement because the TSP dictates that the location of that would act as a neighbor to the south, do not part with element. Other street relatively large.
When the property to the south finally does develop, the property to the south will have to finish the crown of the road and extend over. But I believe we asked for gutter and curb on the south side. But they'll have to, they'll have to address gutter and curb for stormwater purposes. We try to make sure all the stormwater is captured.
Yeah, but if I'm correctly, the stormwater coming down is getting caught on the curb. This is all sloping to the south. And then there is an underground pump that goes over into the stormwater extension. It doesn't immediately go down to 137.
So this street will eventually have all the facilities that are on the north side sidewalk, planters, everything else will also be on the south side along with the bike bike lane or path. So those will, will have to come in later and the road itself would be wider. I think that the neighborhood route or width is 32.
They're proposing 20 right now.
Right, but when it's fully built out, at full build out.
Depending on if there's bike.
I think this is a bike facility is enough. So as a bike facility, it's required to have bike lane and things like that. The total width of that street at a later date will be more like what you see Fisher Road is currently going through.
Oh, yeah, sure. Great, thank you. Great. Thank you.
Sorry, I'm not 100%. I don't know River Terrace as much as Mike does. I don't drive around there in the suburbs.
[laughing].
Chapter 16-124, landscape due to city... Generally, the rule some within the city is we let private property owners manage their own landscape. This does require certain requirements for public, like street treat, and the applicant has sent a street treaty and to the city that was approved by the city engineer. And then ultimately, they'll have to submit some landscaping plans for some of the median and some sidewalk designs and stuff. And that'll be all submitted later on when they're doing all their construction plans submitted to the city. And they requested an extension on that and we allowed it. Circulation access, again, just about to how people will be getting in and out of developments currently. It'd be only...
Can this tree removed?
I'm also seeing, what, uh, chapter 16.124, I don't know. There's some, okay, keep going. Sorry.
That was land... There are, yes, tree removal. The applicant is requesting the removal of, I believe, 107 trees on site, which will, it's technically a separate application. So there's three applications within this proposal. There's the subdivision, the development plan review and the tree removal. So the council will have to approve the removal of 107 trees, which are all on site. And that's entirely due to the construction activities and all of the improvements that will have to be made. But they will also be installing a number of street trees to mitigate that impact. And then presumably, private landowners will also be landscaping their own yards. Flood plane and drainage hazard area is not applied because this property is not in a flood plane or drainage hazard area identified by KEMA. Vision clearance, they provide a vision clearance diagram that shows the city engineer's satisfaction that the corner of 137th and the neighborhood's route will have adequate vision clearance. And then after some concern from the public regarding vision clearance on Beat Bend and 137th, they submitted a revised TIS, Traffic Impact Study, that also addressed those concerns and found that the vision clearance was adequate. Sensors and walls, those sensors and wall permits will be submitted to the city at the time of construction. We just, you know, we have some general requirements for sensors and walls, but they're not submitting for any kind of like electronic or any sort of signage for the entrance to the neighborhood.
So back to, they said that the, it was adequate?
They revised TIS, but they sent forward a second... Found that it was adequate and the city engineer concurred with those findings.
And that was when?
That was in April.
Okay.
And that is also available online, as well as the city engineer's response, his response. Chapter 16-196 is the subdivision, which again goes, they just require to send the city a preliminary flat that shows exactly where the lots are supposed to go. And that flat will, as approved by the council, will have to be relatively identical, title flat that will... And city manager. And they provided us with a preliminary, preliminary class that was the exact same as the one that they had sent us earlier. That wasn't consistent. And then chapter 16-212 is neighborhood circulation, which again just shows that circulation within the neighborhood can be adequately served. There are no, there's no like dead ends or cul-de-sacs or things that do not align with the requirements that are outlined in the Kingston Terrace Master Plan. And so all of this was brought to the planning commission back in April. The planning commission heard it on April 9th, I believe, or also 10th. They heard applicant's statement. Then that hearing was continued to a time date certain, as this one will likely be as well, to two weeks. What was different about that was that at the time, the day of the hearing on May, on April 9th, I was presented with statements from county, with statements from the applicant, and I could not render a recommendation because of new information that was given to me without enough proper notice and time to present my, the new information. And so that was my recommendation to the planning commission. And given that it was a little bit different than how it is today, the recommendation was a time date certain with seven days of additional written public testimony and seven days of additional applicant rebuttal. And so we received a number of other comments from the public and also more statements from the applicant during this time because, again, the hearing just could not operate efficiently because I was given all this information last minute, as was the planning commission. So ultimately, on April 23rd, after all the statements, all the public testimony, the planning commission got together and voted unanimously to approve the, recommend approval of the subdivision, the development plan review and the tree removal, subject to conditions at the end of the staff report. And those conditions can be found on this other document, which is the initial recommendation from the planning commission. I'm going to be 24 or 107. I have a few documents. Like I just said, I can't... So as Mr. Weston mentioned... Condition number one, if this subdivision is involved in planning application approval, it's contingent upon the successful approval of the annexation application. I'll use four dash... Option of the associated annexation ordinance by the city council. Conditions two, three, four, fail processes and requirements that the applicant will have to go through, which are general, the all type of revise, side plans, control, erosion control plans, utility plans, these are not... They'll have to provide the city with funds to ensure the city that the public improvements will be good in a timely manner and to the standards and specifications that were approved by the council. City agency coordination, so the city of King City is not the only agency that would be a part of this construction process. They'll have to access Washington County streets, they'll have to talk to higher to grab the house to, to tiger water, et cetera. Street improvements, kind of detail the specifications of the street improvements, the, that will have to be provided by the applicant. Local streets, 26 foot wide pavement, 26 foot curved, et cetera, standard specifications. One key that I would like to note is sensitive area wetland mitigation. So for, to satisfy 16-114-090, there's a provision that states that the applicant, that no construction activity can take place within 100 feet of a locally significant wetland. And since the, since the wetland delineation provided by the applicant was only on site, I recommended that the planning commission implement this additional condition of approval that states that development activities cannot take place on site prior to receipt of approval letter from DSL for the LWI or concurrence from DSL that no wetlands exist within 100 feet. And that is just to ensure 100% that we know that there are no wetlands within 100 feet of the property because while it might be 99.9% sure, we need to know 100% there are no wetlands. Everything else is, again, just sort of standard, including CWS standard recommended, or standard condition under there. That means I recommend... End the hearing. Those public testimonies, after, after public testimony is given and applicant's statements are given, and they extend this public hearing to a time date certain, June 18th.
Six. [laughing]. Do you move forward?
I, I don't know if we need a second hearing with this body because it's not an ordinance.
Okay.
So with this subdivision, there's already a condition in subdivision that says it's final until the annexation is done. So the final decision is contingent upon the annexation decision next time. So I believe that this body could take action, action to approve the subdivision or add the subdivision based on, or the report. So it's really in your court on doing this long. Max has done a great job of applying conditions to put a contingent upon the annexation proceeding, and so with that, there's really no reason to delay this decision for other months. You can approve this decision, but it won't be technically approved until the annexation is done.
Okay.
Or we could do both of them a month from now, which would be my preference because we're missing two council people and I think it'd be nice to have them all. You have to do the other one anyway.
True.
So I would just do them both.
Yeah, that would have to be voted on as a motion. Um, I think there is, councillor Braverman and councillor Adidi would have to, it would be their responsible, responsibility to be caught up to speed and re-watch this hearing to the other...
I think, let's just keep them both together and do it next time. It seems cleaner.
I do agree with Max's comment, so if you could ask them, as mayor, to make sure they watch it, so they are informed that we don't have to delay the vote next time.
Yep. Yep. That makes the most sense. Okay.
So at the end of public testimony and applicant rebuttal and applicant statement, you will continue the hearing, close public testimony, continue the hearing for a time date certain on June 18th at 6:00. We'll make a motion to do that. That will be at the end of, once everyone gets a chance to speak.
Just updating my script to what you said, continue to time date certain, June 18th, 6:00 p.m. Okay. Hearing done. At this time, I call for the applicant to present their proposal and I'm going to start my 15 minute question.
Okay then. Um, here, city council members, I'm Cody Giannicheff again, Ken Randall Holmes, the applicant here. I'm here to ask for approval for our 87 unit subdivision for application. We spent a lot of time on it, it's really detailed. You can tell Max has spent a lot of time, the city planning staff. Additionally, your planning commission spent a ton of time on it, two public hearings, four to five hours of public testimony, a lot of questions, a lot of in-depth conversations that we can't necessarily recreate here tonight. The, but they came up unanimous, recommendation of approval. And so requesting your approval for our application and so we can get to do what we'd like to do the best, which is building homes for people and adding much needed housing to the Oregon housing supply, we need it port badly. So it's clear, as you guys know the background, when I first started working on this project, there was a lot of frustration with the recent expansion of the early growth boundary and the Kingston Terrace Master Plan. But as we worked through it, we talked to the community members and stuff, a lot of that was concerned. We're really focused around, seemed to focus around the transportation system plan and in our area of the development, the controversial Fisher Road extension. And if you look at that map over there, our project kind of relies without, outside of that area of the Fisher Road extension. So first, we started out by taking a deep dive into the Kingston Terrace Master Plan to figure out what we're allowed to do. The Kingston Terrace Master Plan, it's not an option for us, it's the rule. We have to follow it. We don't get to create our own plan, our own ideas. The Kingston Terrace Master Plan tells us what road we have to build, where we have to put the road, you know, how big it is, where the sewer goes, where the water goes, how big the sewer is, how big the water is, how we treat our stormwater and where we treat it. It also tells us what we can build, what we can't build, apartments, townhomes, commercial. And it also tells us what those buildings have to look like. We're really locked into what we can do. So we started working on this. We put together an application to present to you that meets all these rules that are laid out there in the Kingston Terrace Master Plan. The, um, if you look at our development, little, the little 10s and square app or box up there, so we are located within the Beat Bend neighborhood. What's important to note there, that's a high-density neighborhood. So real houses, townhouses, apartments, and even like commercial is allowed in that area. It's right along Beat Bend Road, so a busy road, and right across the street from our proposed development is our apartment complex, Maybach, Maybach at the Bend Apartments. It's been there for 30 some years and meanwhile, there's been a field across the street. So that's, kind of makes sense that it fits in there. The rural character neighborhood at the south of us has totally different rules. Nothing as dense as our subdivision would be allowed down there. The area has a lot of challenges. It's not meant for development now, it needs pump stations, it needs, has ravines, it has wetlands that has to be preserved. We're in a different boat, we're north of that, and we have a different set of guidelines. The, you know, I've heard, I've watched a few of your meetings now, a common theme I've heard Mr. Gerhart and other members, and it came up earlier tonight, is that transparency and listening are important. I really agree with that and transparency with integrity and professionalism, I think, was added here tonight. I agree with that approach. With that being said, I held three different community meetings, two at the meeting hall and another one onsite with people from the community, and then met with all of our immediate neighbors that are either onsite in their homes to address, you know, more personal concerns that dealt with the boundaries of the properties. And the common theme that kept coming up, and it's coming up here tonight already, are the intersection at 137th and Beat Bend, and then also, it actually, I don't know if it come up here tonight, but stormwater. People downhill of us were really concerned about already existing stormwater issues and other developments, adding water, additional water to that supply of the dishes, ditches and channels that run down to the property. So in response to that, my head, my traffic engineer, did three additional rounds of studies, traffic, studies or traffic analysis, and completed these, added them to the public record for, to put pressure on Washington County. There's a plan to improve the intersection of 137th and Beat Bend Road. And I was glad to hear tonight that the planning, or the planning director at the Washington County is now trying to set up meetings and meet with you, that was our goal. The, to execute that plan, improve that intersection is important to us when we build our development, that there's a functioning, well-functioning intersection there. The, and also, my traffic engineer devised an interim solution of a three-way stop sign at the intersection that all that has to happen, it's on the record, it's there, it's the traffic report, if the traffic, if the county's interested, they can take that and have an interim solution at a relatively low cost. And then for stormwater, our pond, as you can see, is quite large. It's currently so large that in a 25-year storm event right now, as it sits today, about one inch of water leaves our site in ditches and channels to the south of us. After our development, it is reduced to zero inches of rain. We collect all the water from our site, 137th in front of us, redirect it into our pond and we slowly infiltrate it so it gets reduced to zero. So there's some of the extra things that we did right now, since we're on a tight 15 minute timeline.
You don't have to use it, but you can.
I'll turn it over to Steve Cave, my planner, who's walking to the technical deal.
Thank you.
Good evening, city councillors. So as Cody mentioned, there were a number of development requirements that we need to look at for this site, looking at the Kingston Terrace Master Plan. And then when you look at the development code, there's a stated purpose and intent for this area, for the Kingston Terrace District. And those are to provide a wide range of housing types that are attainable for diversity of households, provide a orderly and efficient extension of public services, facilities and utilities, and provide a clear and objective permitting path for development to occur. So this site's in the Beat Bend neighborhood. There's standards in the code which dictate the type of use that's allowed, how access is provided, how utilities need to serve the site. We followed all these rules when, when preparing a design for the site. And the design in front of you meets the city's clear and objective criteria that the developer needs to follow to move forward with the project. There's a diversity of housing types that are identified in the master... project. There's a diversity of housing types that are identified in the master plan. The town center neighborhood has the highest density. The Beef Bend neighborhood is just behind that as far as density goes. And then there's the central rural character districts which have low density. We're proposing, in this medium-density neighborhood, townhome units because they are appropriate type in this neighborhood versus apartment units are better suited in the higher density, and single-family detached units are in those lower-density neighborhoods. The, the street layout for the site, we needed to follow the Kingston Terrace Master Plan standards. So we are providing a new east-west neighborhood route that will serve the whole Beef Bend neighborhood along the southern boundary of the site, and we're providing that connection to 137th as required by the master plan. There was a requirement to prohibit access to Beef Bend Road from this development because it's a minor arterial, and that's stated in the master plan as well. We are making improvements along all the road frontages that this site fronts. So on 137th, there'll be street frontage improvements there, some additional right-of-way dedication and along Beef Bend Road as well. Along Beef Bend Road, we're also installing a 12-foot-wide multi-use pathway across that site frontage. And when providing utility services to the site, we're following the master plan requirements to follow agency standards. So public water service is provided by the City of Tigard. We need to loop the water service through the site by connecting to main lines of both Beef Bend Road and 137th. For sanitary sewer service, we needed to extend service from an existing sanitary sewer line on the east side of 137th, extend it a couple blocks north to our site, and it needs to be sized to serve the whole Beef Bend neighborhood. And then for clean water service standards for the detention pond, that's a very large tract that's been set aside here. It will be able to handle stormwater from all impervious services, and it's going to detain and infiltrate stormwaters on that location. So it's been designed to meet agency standards so that runoff from storm events will be contained onsite, will not impact adjacent property. Then, as far as the design of the townhomes themselves, you know, we meet the density standards as outlined before. These are going to increase housing diversity for the community. So these are townhomes that are attainable for first-time home buyers and for empty nesters that are maybe looking to downsize from large, single-family lots. There'll be two to four units in each structure. In addition to providing some on-street parking, each townhome unit has two off-street parking spaces. And so in summary, the applicant's designed a project to fulfill the purpose and intent of the Kingston Terrace Master Plan. We feel that the submitted materials, the staff report, they all conclude that we've complied with the objective standards in the code. And I'll turn it over to Andrew to kind of wrap this up.
I think we'll save mine for later because we're probably out of time.
Any questions? Any questions for the applicant?
In that case. I'll be real, I had more planned, but in light of the time, I just want to talk about, the one thing I'm really passionate about, I've been a land judge attorney for 28 years, and I'm really passionate about providing housing. Represented home builders for a long time. And, you know, about six years ago, Oregon made a shift. We, the state realized we're in the middle of a pretty deep housing affordability crisis. And about six years ago, they started changing the laws to make, to address that. And I wrote a letter to you guys yesterday. Hopefully you got a chance to see it. But, you know, in preparing for this, I saw that recent data collected by Eco Northwest shows that half the renters in Portland are rent burden, which means they spend more than 30% of their gross income on rent. And part of that problem, there's a lot of reasons for why housing's not affordable, but part of it is, is that the state hasn't kept up with population growth. And that's been going on for a long time, but really in the last decade. I found out that the statistic, only one state, Connecticut, has fewer homes per household than Oregon. And between 2015 and 2019, Oregon's population grew by three residents for every new housing unit, even though the average housing is 2.5 or less per, per home. And that's significantly worsens the housing shortage, double the national, and we double the national average growth rate annually during that time period. And over the last, certainly the last few years, we've had an influx in migration, immigration into, into the country, and that's further complicated particularly the housing rental market, compounding this problem. We've got interest rates that have been really high compared. Historically, they're not high, but we've kind of gotten used to those 2.5% rates, and now they're back up at six and seven. And so we can't solve the immigration things. We can't really solve interest rates here at the local level, but what city leaders can do is address, you know, housing supply by approving housing. And you mentioned that the state economist said we need to build 29,500 homes each year in Oregon, mostly in the Portland region and the Willamette Valley to emerge from this crisis. To the city's credit, they've done a lot more than most cities. They, you know, they adopted the Kingston Terrace Master Plan, and that adds 3,300 housing units over the planning horizon. So you're doing your fair share. We're proposing 87 units. It's a small step compared to the 29,500 per year. It's a step in the right direction. And so, much from those policy standpoints, you know, I urge you to approve these housing units because that's the only way we're going to, you know, our future generation's going to be able to afford a home and afford the rent on homes if we build more units. You know, it's just supply and demand. So thank you very much. Hopefully that was three minutes. Thank you.
You said that there were two off-street parking spaces per unit? Okay, because I read a, a public letter from somebody that was in my inbox that said that there was only one parking, off-street parking place.
I can answer your question.
Clarify the difference between what you have said and what this person from the public had said.
I'd have to do that. So every single lot that we have proposed on here has one onsite spot in the driveway and one onsite spot in the garage.
So that's how you get your two.
Correct, yep.
Okay. Looking at your map here.
Yes.
So the Ingress and Egress are all through 137th?
That is correct, yes.
And that's the only one?
Correct. So for guidance on that, we look to the transportation system plan on that, and that's where they show a road or have a road connecting through for future some developments to connect through. And then Washington County actually has, will not allow additional connections to Beef Bend Road, so that wasn't even an option for us to consider.
I'd point out, take that sort of your heart for now.
I know.
And like, if the neighbors to the west, and that road hopefully would extend over to murder.
It'd probably be stubbed out somewhere, I would imagine.
At some point in time, you have to consider emergency access, access and circulation, and ideally, there's a threshold there somewhere where then you need two routes in and out. Additionally, I think you might see another route on fourth edge there, just down from Beef Bend, but there might be some intersections facing that might need to be routed down through or something to that effect. So there's some aspects that what you see is just one puzzle piece, but the larger jigsaw puzzle that's going to be facing together over time.
Good, thank you.
You can see the slight little allegra road. So there's additional future connections that we can throw at that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, I'm.
All right. Does any member of the audience wish to speak in favor of this application? We have only one. Okay, hearing none. Does any member of the audience wish to speak in opposition to this application? Carl Flonson, you have four.
Thank you. Carl Flonson, 12085 Southwest Queen Richard Drive. Four topics. First, Kingston Square developer will triple the number of houses, homes on the dead end of 137th. The intersection of 137th and Beef Bend is a safety problem, most notably by the suicide left-turn lanes that are too short. It's important that King City actively pursue effects with Washington County. The design of the 87 units will not include sufficient parking. I don't believe they will use their single garage slot. So, and parking in front of it will be, so a single spot, and then, as I wrote in that letter, there's only a few on-street parking spots. So this very dense development is going to fan out, and they will be parking along 137th, which is an unimproved street, and will create additional safety problems for that corner, being so close to the corner. And now you've got places where people are parking, and there's no pavement. So there's grass that can be partly on the pavement. It's a mess. Second, clean water services has not yet released the South Pole Mountain Stormwater Study. By approving developments before the stormwater plan is in place, with the current known erosion along 137th and in King City Park, the loose solving existing problems is a comprehensive plan by approving developments like Kingston Square. Tried to raise the safety issues of 137th and Beef Bend by explaining how the history of the TSP impacts these developments, but the chair for the planning commission shut me down, would not let me speak on how the TSP history impacts safety, traffic safety as these developments. Fourth item. I did meet with the president of the River Neighborhood Association, and he confirmed that subdivided lots cannot become members of the Neighborhood Association, and the association will be erecting a fence and putting signs up on their park this summer. So it's going to be clearly for members only. Also, during the planning commission reviews, I revised, I raised issues with stormwater, seismic investigations, and the single egress fire code restriction problems. And by raising these here again today, I reserve my right to challenge another. That's it.
Does anyone wish to provide neutral comments?
I took percent of my time. Start the timer.
You did.
Hey, Mike Meyer. I live in the, King City Urban Growth Boundary, more specifically Kingston Terrace, more specifically the central neighborhood. So this is a reactive comment just based on what I heard earlier today. I don't know if I fully understood it or not, and it's a very minor, 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 minor detail. But when I come out of 137th on occasion, and I look to the west, I think the sight distance is minimal for me, or maybe because I'm an old guy and my sight's not as good as it used to be. I don't know, or I'm a little bit more apprehensive, whatever it might be. But I know that when we come out of 147th out of our neighborhood and we look west, there's a hedge there. And sight distance is minimal. The way Washington County determines it, I think, is they put their bumper on the fog line, and depending on how long the front of your vehicle is, is going to determine how far you can see down the roadway. And there's a hedge to the west on 147th, and it's always a constant problem for the people that live there to get them to trim their hedge. So I think I heard that there's a hedge to the west coming out of 137th, and that there is a plan to maybe trim that hedge. But my question would be, what is going to be the criteria or the ongoing requirement for that hedge? And that would be my only advice on this particular intersection as far as trying to enhance safety in the interim until an intersection is improved. I think that's about the only thing you can do at this point. So thank you.
Hey, does the applicant have any rebuttal?
Thank you, and members of the city council. So we, the two issues that I want to mainly talk about are what I think are the two major issues. The roadway issues, you know, the, kind of the 600-pound gorilla, 800-pound gorilla, intersection of Beef Bend Road and 137th. And then I want to talk about stormwater a little bit. You know, our, we heard loud and clear that, that neighbors have said that they consider the intersection to be unsafe. And I'll take their word that there are some problems with that intersection. There was some suggestion that the project should be delayed until Beef Bend Road is improved. Beef Bend Road is not an approval standard for this application, so technically it's not legal to use that as a basis for denial. But more importantly, our, our traffic engineer didn't find any historical safety problems. But having said that, they used data that only goes to December of 2023, and neighbors insisted, including here tonight, that there were some recent changes made to the intersection that have worsened its operations. We heard all that last time and said, you know, hey, traffic engineer, go back and kind of look at that and see what we can do. And what the traffic engineer came back was and says, hey, you know, we don't meet the warrants, all the warrants for stop signs, but we meet enough of them to where if Washington County really wants to address this issue, they can put stop signs, the three-way stop signs on that road. And that's probably a good idea, given all the testimony. Now, that's up to Washington County because it's their road. But at least we have a solution. And we sent that traffic engineering report to Washington County and said, hey, consider this as a solution. So the ball's really in their court on that. But what I don't think is a good idea, and I don't think it's, it's not lawful, but I don't think it's a good idea, is the idea of kind of kicking the can down the road and say, we won't approve any development until the road gets fixed. And here's why. What I figured out about Washington County is that they're, they're react, they're used to be, they're reactive. They're not proactive. They're not planning. They figure out what problem is the worst problems in the county, and they have a limited batch of money, and they throw the problem at whatever the worst problem is. And so when they, when they first came to us, they said, why don't you redesign your subdivision so that you can put your access on Beef Bend Road? And we said, well, two reasons. One, city code doesn't allow it, it's actually be illegal. And two, Washington County, your TSP doesn't allow it either. And they're like, oh, okay. And I think they dropped that idea because I never heard back from them on that. But I think, I think approving development is the only thing that's going to put pressure on the county to actually fix the problem. The letter that I saw, the letter that you sir provided me, further indicates to me that that's the correct approach because now they're talking about reprioritizing the project, the 130, the big project, the big fix, if you will, and bringing that up to the forefront. And that's really what needs to happen. The interim fix, no stop signs, okay, that'll get you by some time. It'll make sure that it's safe for the short term. But the big fix problem is to redesign that intersection. And that can only happen with Washington County's approval and support and effort. What I will say is that we are going to contribute a couple million dollars in SDC funds, two, two point?
Two point three to traffic.
Right, specific traffic funds. Now, I think that, to fix that intersection's going to cost more than that, but we're, you know, we're writing a big check that is a step in the right direction. If this doesn't get approved, the check doesn't come, obviously. So, you know, kicking the can down the road, bad approach. Getting on with development and, and putting, holding Washington County's feet to the fire, good approach. All right, stormwater treatment. Cody kind of stole all my thunder on that because he Cody kind of stole all my thunder on that, because he did point out that if we were following the normal rules, we'd have about, you know, 10,000 square foot detention pond. We're almost double of that. And that's because we're in a sensitive area. That's because we're taking in all the stormwater from our site, and we're detaining it. And what that does is it allows that to infiltrate into the ground. So, all that water just stays in that pond until some of it evaporates, of course, but the vast majority of it trickles down into groundwater and eventually makes its way down into the river and the wetlands down there. So, we can't solve every problem that was created. I understand there are problems created in stormwater, because the development that happened up higher on the hill was done in the 70s, 80s, or whatever, whenever back in the day, and it wasn't done as well as it should have been. We can't solve that entire problem. But not only are we not making it worse, we're making it better. And I think, you know, if every developer does that, it'll, overall, will help the situation. So, with regards to some of the other issues, the hedge that was mentioned here tonight, that hedge is on right-ofway, is my understanding? Talking to Cody about that, it's on right-ofway. So, that means that that hedge can be, you know, chopped back by the city. We can do it. Anyone can do it that's, you know. Oh, the county road, I'm sorry, county road. But the county can do it, the developer can do it. You know, being in the right-ofway means it's subject to the public easement, and that also includes making any kind of safety-related change to that right-ofway in order to preserve line of sight. And, and so, I think that is a problem here again that gets solved with development. And that's going to be good for, for everyone. With regards to parking, it is true that a lot of people fill their garage up with stuff and then park in the street. I mean, that, everyone knows that, that, you know, some people, that's what happens. Having said that, the city standards are, you know, two off-street parking, and that's what we meet. So, that, that does sort of end the conversation on that. But further consider, you could, in your code, write to where every house has to have a three-car garage or something. But what that really does is it makes housing more expensive. And going back to the issue of solving housing problems, we've got to be able to build housing. Sometimes it isn't the best housing, but it's the housing that people can afford. You know, not everyone gets to have the gold-plated house that has the three-car garage or the four-car garage. Lord knows, I would love to have a four-car garage, but I don't. Why? Because I can't afford one. So, so really, you know, when you hear testimony like that, it, what's important is you go back to the standards and say, what does the standard say? Two, two off-street parking requirements. We meet that standard, and that kind of ends the conversation on that.
Correct. House Bill 2000 and 2003 eliminated the parking requirement. It's to proceed our homeowner's authority and remove that, so we do not have the authority to require.
That's a good point. I didn't think about that, but that's correct. But that goes back to what the, you know, and I said, you finally got a governor, you got, finally got a legislature that's serious about housing. Those are the types of things that are coming in. They're trying to take away barriers to affordability. Now, that sometimes means that you don't have the best product anymore, but, you know, the most ideal product. But sometimes, you know, the best product is the one that someone can afford. And, and that's, kind of the genesis behind some of those rules is, you know, making it to where smaller homes can be built, tighter density. Anyway, in closing, I just want to say, the city's done a lot of work planning the Kingston Terrace Master Plan. I've looked at a lot of plans over the 28 years I've been practicing law. This is, it's a, overall, you know, it probably needs a few things tweaked, but it's a very good plan. It's very thorough. And as Cody said, it tells us exactly what we're supposed to build. It doesn't, it doesn't give us much, you know, it has some really tight goalposts that we have to meet. And so, we did meet those goalposts. We did do exactly what that plan says. And therefore, I believe that it is only appropriate tonight, or next Thursday, to vote for an approval. And we thank you for your time.
I just had one question. There was another question about the hedges. Do you have any information about that? There was, remember the comment before about trimming hedges at 137th and Beef Ben?
Yeah, that, that's what I was referring to. I thought I covered that.
Question about, I think it was the upkeep of it?
Oh, oh, oh.
How that's going to?
Well, the upkeep. So, once it's in public right-ofway, the city can, you know, the city owns that right-ofway. I mean, they own the easement, basically. The underlying land still is owned by the neighboring landowner. The city can do a couple of things. One, it can go out there and trim them themselves, but it can also pass an ordinance, and maybe you already have that ordinance. It says that the landowner who owns the underlying land is responsible for keeping site distance clear. I'm guessing you probably have that in your ordinance. Most cities do. Like, for example, I, my city, I live in Happy Valley, and they say that if my sidewalk gets lifted up by trees, that I have to fix the sidewalks, even though it's public right-ofway. And I got one of those nasty grams from my homeowner association saying that my tree, you know, $2,000 later, I've got brand-new sidewalks, or two panels of my sidewalks are fixed. And it was at my expense. So, you know, you can pass those kind of laws that say, keep those vision triangles free and clear. And if it doesn't happen, any member of the, of the public could file a complaint with the city, and it would be a code-enforcement matter. So, that's one way of dealing with it. But you could go, have your public maintenance folks go out there and take care of it. If it's county right-ofway, the county's public right-ofway. Folks could take care of it.
Can they just be removed?
Well, and that's what we're, I don't know the exact situation, but we're either going to trim them back, or if the trees are, if there's no way to save them, then they probably do need to be removed for safety reasons. Members of the public will oftentimes plant vegetation in the public right-ofway in front of their house, and oftentimes, they don't even know it's the public right-ofway. And I remember once I got a call from someone and said, the county's ripping out my bushes in front of my house. And I said, how far off the street is it? And, oh, about five feet. And I said, are you sure it's yours? Sure enough, turns out, it was in the right-ofway. So, when the county shows up with bulldozers to remove all that stuff, you know, it was Washington County. They didn't even give the landowner the courtesy of telling them they were going to do it. And she was quite shocked, but I had to give her the legal advice that said, mm, you can't do anything about it. You know, and she was somewhat disappointed by that, but that, that is the way it works.
I mean, probably first best choice is to talk to the landowner that has.
And, and that's typically the collaborative approach that most developers will take. And I know, I mean, Cody and his development team are some of the most conscientious developers I know, as evidenced by the fact that they had some three meetings. And so, that would definitely be his first approach, you know, is to work corroboratively with the landowners.
I have complaints about not being able to read street signs and, and speed limits because people's trees.
Okay, I think city staff has some, something to add.
Yeah, great, great question, Mayor and City Council. And for the record, Ezra Hammer, the law firm, torturing on Friday night. As you heard, there is some analysis that was conducted by your city engineer. Says that in order to ensure appropriate site distance, certain hedges need to be trimmed. It was also mentioned by a member of the public tonight. For that reason, I'm glad that you're continuing this hearing. Need to identify with the engineer where those are located. If they are located in the public right-ofway, they can be addressed with a certain condition of approval. If they're located on private property, they need to be addressed differently. Staff is going to come back to you prior to your next, or as part of your next hearing, those conditions of approval based on the location of those hedges. Are also going to prepare for you a memo land and speak a little bit more clearly to kind of the intersection as a whole. We've had a lot of conversation on that. And there is some ambiguity based on the information of Washington County was provided. Verify after use and how it's controlled, how the conditions of approval are developed, and speak to the site distance requirements with the appropriate condition.
Any other questions?
Staff, the councillors have any questions for staff? Great, hearing none. This closes public testimony. We will continue this hearing to time date.
And a second vote to close the public testimony and continue to.
I tried to do that last night, I mean, I flipped it. Okay, close the public testimony. At this time, I'd like for motion to continue the public hearing to close.
Yes, so you want a motion to close public testimony and?
Not while my script's though. Okay. At this time, we'd like to ask for a motion to close public testimony and continue the public hearing to a time date certain, June 18, 2025, at 16:00. Thank you. We'll call, vote, I believe, is what we need.
So, that was President Gelfen move, and then councillor Hartman second. Okay, based on the numbers, if I could, and we don't have anyone online, we could do a show of hands for now, since it's not the final vote on this. So, just show of hands.
All in favor?
Aye. To continue to close public testimony, continue to June 18, that's the.
Correct. Great, that closes our public hearing for land use case number OU-2024-0. No, not.
We still have some really important to last this.
Right.
You've already been through most of this.
Yep.
All of you, except for councillor Girard, I believe, a bit too budgeted.
The last resolution. That he was. Okay, should we just continue on? Okay. Next item, resolution number R2025-09, resolution adopting a transfer budget and making budget appropriations for fiscal year 2024-25. I'm going to recuse myself from all budget-related matters, since I am a city employee. And, so. Any?
Well, you're going to recuse yourself, Mayor, if you can just hand the envelope to President Gelfen to introduce the item.
Do we have to switch seats?
If you want to, I mean, you can opt in.
You're in charge of the resolution stuff, the budget stuff.
Ezra, can you go on the door first, please?
Go for it, I'll take the.
Do you want my iPad? I have it, I have them up.
The first item.
There it is. Go for it. Thank you, I appreciate it. Okay, thank you, ma'am.
No, I have no idea what I'm, President Gelfen, we are introducing number nine, the Resolution 2025-09. It's a resolution adopting a transfer budget and making budget appropriations for fiscal year 2024-25. We usually make a transfer budget at this point in time to ensure that all of our budget funds are well within the bounds that are prescribed for our budget so that we don't have any overages on any funds by the end of the year or any last-minute adjustments that we might need to make to address any inconsistencies or issues that we have to address. So, this transfer budget does that. I have Heidi here with me tonight, her CPA. She's had the opportunity to work with Mira on a number of these items. Heidi, you want to talk about this, or?
Yeah, this was the, the Resolution 2025-09.
Mostly the vehicle.
Yeah, it's really just to buy a vehicle. It's moving funds within categories within a fund. That's all it is. It's just budget purposes, we have to have the right category. So, we're not asking to spend more money. It's just moving it from one bucket to the other. Vehicles, it has capital outlay, it's not a mix area.
So, that vehicle's not a golf cart for Max?
It is not, unfortunately, to his chagrin, it's not.
We did hire another police officer, and so, we kind of needed another vehicle. And so, also, we're, our 2018, our, we still have our 2018, it was the 2014 that we're trying to age out, and so, we're trying to room in. So, trying to fully equip these as best we can.
What's the first one? I don't know if we need to, if you have questions?
Any questions on the transfer budget being proposed, Resolution 2025-09?
We're just approving, moving budget to A to B to then spend it the right way.
Exactly.
I'd like to move to vote to approve the transfer.
From A to B?
From A to B.
Moving seconded, all in favor.
Four zero, thank you very much. Next one is public hearing resolution on 2025-10, the resolution adopting the 25-26 fiscal year budget, making appropriations and authorizing fund transfers and levying taxes for the fiscal year 2025-26. The budget that you all sat on in the budget committee. Don't think you're hard to party to that, but.
All right, I thought you were in the yard.
All right.
Also on that one, too.
So, you've all been apprised of the budget. We walked through it in, during the budget committee meeting. So, we're asking for a motion to approve, like, and adopt.
So, moved.
Moved, moved and seconded, all in favor.
And thank you again.
Thank you.
Please.
I don't see the 10:30 at night, it's kind of going really.
I know.
I just put budget last, every time, right? All right, the final resolution is Resolution Number R2025-12. It's a resolution declaring that the city election to receive state revenues. Do I need to tell them what we use our revenue for, or which revenues those are?
I mean, it was, it's the revenues in the budget.
Yes. It's all the state revenues I can get, property taxes, gas taxes. A lot of.
Funds and things, no.
Every time you stop this, it always comes through.
So, here, motion.
So, moved.
Second.
Move to seconded, all in favor.
And, I don't know, our levy pass. Thank you, King City resident.
And it looks like toilet in Tiger's kind of.
Really? That sounds real close, yeah.
On the.
Well, I was looking at the release at 4 o'clock this afternoon.
Which, which one? Which one are you talking about?
Uh, Tiger Toilet in School District.
Is it on a recount? No kidding?
Yes.
That, that is. Crazy close.
Only 15% of the total people.
Ronnie, I'm unable to hear anything. If you're able to hear me, give me a thumbs up, I'll just start talking.
If you're able to hear me, give me a thumbs up, I'll just start talking.
Chief, can you hear us?
I can hear you now.
Okay, we would love your report.
Oh, that just concluded my report, you didn't hear it?
I'll allow it.
All right, it's real, it's real quick. I just want to kind of echo what Mike just said. I just want to thank the voters of King City for their passage of the police levy. That's awesome, and we love the continued support. Just real quick, just kind of all things new here, Lieutenant Sickler and I picked up the new, there's a brand-new Dodge Durango that's sitting outside. It's actually a 2024, it's about a 10 months from order to picking it up. We got it from Salem today, so you'll see the second black Dodge that's out there. We have a new officer on King City Police Department, his name is Joey Haynes, was sworn in last week. He has been previously trained down at the academy, a lateral, and so, he is going to be with Officer Cotillo through some field training, and then he'll kind of branch out from there, and we're kind of hoping that he'll be up and running and out on his own in a couple of months. And let's see, what do I got? Sorry, it's a little dark in here now. With recent promotion to sergeant is Officer Courtney Aragoni, so we congratulate her and look forward to her growth. And our last thing is, oh, just an update on body cams. With the program, it's about a month old now, seems to be rolling along really well. The only minor glitches we have is when we have some clerical errors. We're able to interstuff from our work phones, and sometimes some numbers get transposed, and then we just have to clean it up in the morning time with the lieutenant and I. And that's it, I'll answer any questions.
Doesn't look like we have any questions. Chief Capla, thank you so much for your report.
Thank you.
Thanks for hanging in there with us. Okay, next, we have city manager's report.
I only have a million what they report, but I'm trying to try to keep it really short. You're all aware, there is a longstanding writ for the position that Counselor Hartman is in. The judge found in favor of the city, found that our method of accounting debate was sufficient. We use our procedures and our website, started it, and the way we read the code, and that was an interpretation by the mayor, the council, at that point in time, judge found in favor of us and dismissed the writ. That was one of the longstanding issues. I'm not going to go into the other, other ones of issue that we can discuss later. But otherwise, I'm really looking forward to a lot of stuff going on. We had a charter committee meeting and made some really good progress, I think, through the first couple pieces of the charter committee we'll meet again with them. About six, eight, this month so far, commission charter, budget committee, you all as well, so it has been a very busy month. Audit came back clean, the report at the last meeting, we got far way through, but then we got cut off, and I just wanted to say that that audit was done, hats off to Katie and Mira and the crew for their, all their hard work. Congratulations, Officer Aragoni, on her performance through that interview panel. We had a number of sergeants from around the district that stood in on an interview panel, and she came out as a good source. So, congratulations on that, it shows our police department's growing. Welcome aboard to Officer Haynes through the, just starting out and getting his feet wet out there on the, on the circuit, so we're welcoming him aboard. And we were in the midst of our PIO, but I can't go into it, but we are delayed, and I would be happy to talk with you offline about the circumstances. Unfortunately, we are looking at some other options.
Are we, is it like reopened, or do we have other applicants, or like, what's the, where do we have?
The situation is that.
I think we're moving to number two for right now.
Yeah.
So, there were just multiple applicants? Okay, yeah, okay. All right, yeah, thank you. Anything else? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayors and councilors' reports, Counselor Hartman. Vice President Gelfen.
No.
Counselor Tyso, Counselor here.
Well, coincidentally, I did attend the city charter meeting. And I was very impressed, we got a lot of work done. I think that was, what, our second meeting?
Yes, second meeting.
And we had one, a number of them scheduled, and I'm hoping I can continue to be on that. I'm being told right now that I can't, so. So, look, my report.
Gretchen told me.
Thank you for your service on the charter committee.
The counselor because she wanted you on the charter committee.
Yes.
Unfortunately, that kind of, that reminds me.
But we still have two.
I mean, we, so we've had three positions now open for the, for point.
We have four people from the planning commission to get on that. I'll be correct. I'd like to bring it up next week, because we have a question.
I think at one point, we talked about all the rules around, is it two?
I think it's two, but I'm.
I think they have like a, like there's like a residence clause in.
No, it's, it's late, let's not miss loop. Yeah, okay. Anything else? Okay, my report, I would just like to say, welcome. Welcome to your first week, and nothing else for me. So, does somebody like to?
No move.
What is your motion, Counselor Hartman? Second.
Second.
Okay, Counselor Tyso, second, all in favor? You have an amendment.
Right on time there, too, I think.
10:30 on the.
Four hour, one and a half hour meeting.
No, it's only four, we started at 6:30.
I checked this morning, and we were going to have a four hour.
Gosh, I was hoping it wouldn't actually be four, but.
We'll meet in the.